Well, seeing as it is six o'clock, I will call the meeting to order because there was some preliminary preliminary business that we have to address. If I can call that up here.
Okay.
We are missing.
One.
Russell, is that all?
We may get on to George's one.
I have a second. Let's do this.
Sorry about that. Ah, correct. Uh, let me get back to my. Well, I guess there is no. I guess the preliminary business must have been withdrawn. So I guess we can go directly to the continued. I think I'll hold off just a few more minutes in case a member signs in.
Why do you think the preliminary business was withdrawn, George?
Uh, hold on. Hello. Yep. It looks as though the Starbucks project, they had asked to be on the agenda to address some items and they must have withdrawn their request. So I think some.
Yeah, George, George, I'm on for the Starbucks and we did, we did not withdraw the request.
Oh, I don't see it on the agenda, so I don't know why it was.
Make sure you have the latest agenda, George. There's two of them.
I see him there.
I was just going to look for an amendment. Ah, there it is. So I guess we can proceed on that.
Can you hear me?
This is a request for a minor modification of the special permit for Wareham Retail Management LLC. And if I can get back to the meeting so I can see who I'm trying to. And Russell's joined us as well, so we have a full board.
Can you hear me, George?
Yep.
Okay.
Derek, are you here to?
Yeah, I'm ready. I'm ready, George. Thank you. Derek Redgate from High Point Engineering, representing owner and the applicant All Rig from, for One Philly Road. So we're in the process of, we're in the process of constructing the second phase, which Starbucks building. And a lot of progress on it, a lot, and some significant site work has been going on over the last couple of weeks. And last week I had put in a request for some minor modifications to the site plan. There were two of them. The, one of them has sort of gone away. Charlie, myself and the contractor, we came to a consensus on the first request for a modification to the pavement. So we can just quickly withdraw that. The second request was, we want to modify a location of a proposed light pole at the entrance. It's going to be moved 25 to 30 feet in a different location. We had some site utilities that conflicted with its location. And we'd like to move it to the location on, on the sketch that I provided.
So you're just looking to move a pole?
Yeah, when I made the request last week, it was a little more significant. The other request was more certificate and this was sort of minor, but yes, that's all I'm looking for tonight. Is the moving of what, from one location to another of a proposed light pole.
So Derek, this is Richard Swenson. I'm looking at the drawing. I just want to make sure I understand. There's a current light pole that's basically in the middle of the road. It was going to be moved on the map to the right, directly to the right of it. And the request is, is to move it to the right and up a little bit on the map. Do I understand right?
That's, that's close. So the, the location on the right was its, was its original proposed location. That's what we're approved for. They, when they ran into conflicts, they actually already installed it to the left. So that's, that's the installed location. That's not, that was not approved and that's not the, the location. So.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, from, from proposed to now, we're just basically looking to move it across the, the drive aisle.
It's not a traffic, I'm not a traffic expert, but I don't see a real issue here. Is this for the parking lot lighting or is this?
Yeah, it, it will extend to the parking lot, but it's, it's mainly for the, the access road to access all three sites.
So it's sight lighting? It's not carrying voltage or, I mean, it's not service, a service pole?
Correct. It's a, yeah, it's a light pole, light pole with one fixture.
Any comments?
Minor change. I mean, they, they, there was so much going in with that island. There was a lot going on there. There's an underground infiltration system that takes up probably 90% of it. And then a transformer and some handholds, the electric company took up a lot of area. So we basically ran out of space. That's the reason for, for the, for the change.
Any issues with that from the board?
This is Richard. I have none.
No, I don't have any.
I don't have any.
I'm screen. Can I get a motion to accept that as a minor modification?
Motion to accept a minor modification as discussed here by Mr. Redbrook.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Just make a request.
Yeah, what, yeah, sure, Joe.
Derek, when you change that for the plan, make sure that the closest face of the concrete base is three feet behind the edge of pavement.
We will, yes.
And also make sure that before you actually excavate, that they find the pipe that runs from that drainage area across the street to the infiltration area. You don't want to be boring through it.
Yep, I agree. We'll, we'll coordinate that as well, Charlie.
Those are the only things I had comment on, George.
Thank you.
Location's fine.
Yep. Okay, good. That's all you had, Derek?
Yeah, that's all I have. Yeah, that, that was quick and easy. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Have a good night, everyone. Take care.
Yep, you too. All right, back to the continued public hearing for the hospitality, recreation and entertainment district. One thing that I started to look at and I haven't completed honestly, is we do have a watershed protection bylaw in the zoning bylaws that seems to limit this property to single family residential homes, this, this district, the R130 district. Along with a lot of prohibited uses, groundwater discharge and things of that nature. I haven't had time to see exactly how much conflict is, is there with the list of uses and, and what's requested. But I, I think that's kind of a big hurdle. How do we get these to work in harmony? I don't know if anybody would like to comment on that, but.
I'll, I'll comment, George. I don't expect them to work in harmony at all. From my perspective, the new over, the new overlay district is just what it, what that is, is another overlay that comes with its own permitted uses, accessory uses and, and disallowed uses. The key being that if you want to do any of those in, in this one we're talking about tonight, it requires a special permit that goes through a planning board approval process that doesn't have anything to do with the R130 stuff. So not only that, but the, the water protection overlay is another one. And I, and I have read it and I see some text from that has been included in the latest revision. So I, I don't think they have to be in harmony at all.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may comment as well, Jeff Tachio here for the notice group. Um, one of the things that we're looking at here, and it's, it's a big advantage is just as of right with the R130, you're looking at just basically septic systems, conventional with discharge of meeting fields, very, again, very conventional. No treatment whatsoever. This gives an opportunity to, you know, have to satisfy all of the requirements that we're talking about. We talk about the groundwater protection district, basically the zone two, that is most of the land that we're talking about. In addition, there's already a buttermilk bay overlay district as well. So those are in place now. And then what we did after last week, we've gone through a host of additions. What we did was we added specific requirements to this language that matched a lot of that same, you know, the same requirements of those two overlays. So we've been building all of this, not to have to rely on just these other overlays. But the bottom line here is that you're going to wind up with actual treatment, monitoring, et cetera. Many of the things that George had and, excuse me, Charlie had in his letter, we actually went through and we incorporated a lot of that. So I think, I think that should be in significantly better shape than when you folks are last week.
I do have to put more time in on that to see.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a comment. Mr. Tachio, I see an awful lot of the comments from last week in the current document. And I, I appreciate you listening as well as you did. I'm struggling mightily with zoning articles versus special permits. And we talked about this last week a little bit. I think about, we had comments last week about, we can't, we shouldn't be doing anything unless the interchange, interchange is understood and put in place. And, and I should have said this last week and I'm going to, but I didn't, so I'm going to say it tonight, is that this is a large area of Wareham with a overlay area that, overlay zoning that allows for lots of different things. And the reason we don't want to consider entrance and exit off of 25 is because someone may want to put a campground in on the north edge of, on the town line, on the north side with access from Plymouth, which would have nothing to do with an interchange. So that's why this is zoning and why permitting is permitting. We have to separate the two. Can't get confused with the project versus the zoning. And also to that point, back to the water side a little bit. I think it's important to understand that with our current zoning, we could put 100 new septic tanks in this area right now without any of the water controls that are in this document. I mean, that, that would apply to the campground, the going in on the north side, if they want to do something there. They would, they would have to fall underneath these new requirements that has been added based on Charlie's letter. And I'm not sure that's right. I could live with it, but I'm not sure it goes, I'm not sure it would be right for every project. And I'm going back to separating zoning for projects or zoning from permits. If a permit comes along for a campground, I think our requirement should, would be very different than if a permit came, a request came along for a Waterworld or a Great Wolf Lodge or a Race Track or Casino. So I'm wondering if some of the water stuff needs to be specifically identified as potential things the planning board could require as part of a special permit based on the project description.
So if I, if I could comment.
Could I?
Yeah. It looks to me that the properties that you're talking about are already in the zone two. In any event, that's a, that's a significant characteristic of the R130. Just because, you know, connectivity to the Agalom River, to, you know, the various bogs, et cetera. You've got a very, very strong zone two in that area. So if you look at the watershed protection, which George brought up at the beginning, it is already in place. And what we were doing is, you know, we, our initial thinking was it's all in place, so we don't have to add anything more. And then we, we added it. So from the perspective of, you know, this zone, it's, it's not more onerous than anything that's out there for the land that, you know, we've got eyes on, for example.
In it, from where my father built that.
The, I, I don't really have a problem with anything that's been said. The only issue I have is we need to have special permit parameters that will allow us to deny things based on some of these findings. A lot of time, a lot of times the special permits have been created and it sounds good, but they actually become as of right because of the way they're written. So I just, I'm just trying to illustrate some of the hurdles we have to address in giving us the tools to enforce some of these parameters.
George, in trying to understand the entire overlay district proposal, we will not have any residential in that seven mile, seven square miles after, if this should be approved. Is that correct?
No, you will still have the underlying zoning that you can adhere to. This gives a option to property owners, developers in that area to take another path, to do different things on the same piece of property.
And if I can point that out, that was a really good point that was made the first meeting. And we added a brand new section two. And what it does is it clarifies how the overlay district and uses function. And, you know, basically it says, you know, a landowner can choose either or. But once they choose this district, for example, that shall control the uses on the district. So the entirety of number two is all addressing what you folks brought up last week. So I think I cleaned it up really well.
Second, I had a question. The, the gambling, what use does that fall under exactly?
Well, there's no, right now there's no proposal. So there's no, you know, there's nothing out there for gambling, things of that nature. If there was a gaming component, I mean, it would basically be some of the recreation indoor place of amusement.
Yeah, I, see, I'm, I'm opposed to the gambling portion. And I see some of the special permit development that is prohibited. And personally, guys, I think that gambling, the secondary effects of gambling are not good for the town. I think there's plenty of economic development that could happen without that.
Right. So this, this is just the bylaw. So if, and that goes to what I think Richard had said first, difference between special permits and then also the bylaws. So without a bylaw change, you can't do anything there other than the houses when.
No, I know that, but I'd like to get, I'd like that to be as a prohibited.
No, if you have a concern, what happens on the gambling is that if there is something that falls under that potential act, there has to be a townwide referendum. So that's something that's totally different, you know, much, you know, it's got its own process, et cetera.
So it's not going to be part of the bylaw. In other words, it's going to be.
Yes, exactly. Because it doesn't say anything in here about that. It's just a.
Right, it's not anywhere.
But this doesn't supersede any requirement for a referendum vote. But again, that, that's putting the horse, you know, before the cart now.
Well, it's, that's kind of what came up in this whole district. It's all anyone's talked about. So I think we should just bring it up so that everyone knows exactly what's happening.
So where, so what, what I'm trying to do right now is I'm trying to get a special, you know, basically the special permit bylaw to you folks. This is my third, this is my third meeting today having to do with mixed use special permit bylaws in different towns.
Hope you're getting paid well.
Yeah, so far so good. My point, joking aside, my point is that this is what towns are looking to do to basically change the zoning. The easiest way to create economic development for a municipality is through the zoning. And right now, you know, when we talk about things are going to be bad, et cetera, they're really going to be bad. We have meetings with the social chamber of commerce, they had an entire meeting basically dedicated to zoning changes, economic development. And this is, this is Wareham's opportunity to get better zoning in there than the single families.
Well, right now Wareham's the most sought after town south of Boston. So I don't really see that in my view at the moment. But obviously anything could happen. We could have a new pandemic tomorrow with a different virus. But as far as, you know, getting things in place so that we don't become a city, because Wareham's not a city, that's one of the reasons we're so sought after. And what the most up and coming town in this area, and we don't have the bridge traffic. So we, we should be in the driver's seat here as to what we want to do. We shouldn't be worried that we're not going to have an economically viable town because we, we are going to.
George, could I come in?
Sure.
A couple of things with respect to the water again. I'm still of the opinion that this zoning bylaw for this type of development should be specific with respect to putting in place any procedures or requirements that would be necessary to monitor the groundwater as it exists today for the purpose of making sure that there is a way to stem the problem should one develop before that contamination gets downstream. Groundwater flow is relatively short, but it's not short. In a sandy soil, you'll find that it will like, as I remember the, the numbers, I think it's like a foot a day. If you allow a development of this type in an area that's above Route 25, it'll be many, many days, perhaps many months before the effects of that will be felt on the south side of Route 25, which is direct path to the Onsetwell Field.
But Charlie? Go ahead. I had a question for you. I'll come back. I'll let you finish. I thought you were done. I'm sorry.
Well, if you want to interject it now, go ahead because I've got a couple of other things I want to talk about.
Well, yeah, you, you talk about this type of development. And I'm not sure what type of development you're referring to.
Well, anything that would come under the jurisprudence of this particular proposal that says that it's going to be a minimum of 100 acres. And anything that would come under the guidelines of this proposal would need 100 acres minimum in order for it to happen. That's a large development. In looking at the amount of area that we're talking about, I happen to have a copy of the zoning map in front of me. I think the last time we met, I said it might be in the order of maybe 20%. But it goes all the way from Charge Pond Road in the west to the Plymouth line to Red Brook and down as far south as Route 25. Now, that's a sizable area. It might not be 25%, but it's close to it.
Mr. Chairman?
The zone two takes up probably three quarters of that. The Buzzet's Bay Overlay District or Groundwater Protection District is a thin strip that runs from Plymouth on the north down as far as Buttermilk Bay and is no further west than say the majority of the old White Island Shore's development. Does not take into consideration Shangalar or Wareham Lake shores, but it's a long strip. So that's a separate developed area. There's no reason why we shouldn't take all precautions and all measurements that we can to protect that water supply. It's the only one we have.
Mr. Chairman?
It's gone, it's gone. And I don't care whether it, whether it's this development, this proposal, anything that impacts the size of this project proposal in terms of density and total size is a large one with several uses. Either any one of which could potentially be a contaminant. I don't care at this point in time, what's written in the bylaw. The bylaw was never written for this size of a development, all inclusive. This particular one is specific, so it needs specific attention and it needs a lot of attention in top, in how to promulgate it, how to go through the process, even decide on what zoning uses you really want in this area.
Mr. Chairman?
I would agree with Russell. I don't think we need to include gambling in there. There are enough other uses that are provided in the list that have become part of the development. We don't need that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hi. So all of those comments were made last week, almost were datum. What we did was we went through and we specifically incorporated responses. So if you look at what the new, you have section four. And you can have C two, if everyone's following along. What we do is in addition to the requirements of 1530, which are your baseline site plan review criteria, specifically it says, in addition, the applicant shall provide a hydrological groundwater study that includes an analysis of groundwater flow, direction, supply, depth in nitrogen loading, and that demonstrates that there will be no adverse nitrogen impacts in surrounding groundwater and surface water resources. The planning board shall conduct a technical review by a consultant of its choice at the applicant's expense. We would expect as part of a special permit, that groundwater monitoring, of course, will go into all of the preliminary, preliminary work here, but that that would be an ongoing condition. That's, that's how the special permit will act. This goes above and beyond anything else you have in your entire, you know, in your bylaw. So what we've done is we've taken what Sir Riley had in his letter last week. We took some of the other language that you've got and we expanded upon it to put specifically in this section proposed, answering everything that was just discussed. That, you know, I, I'd like to think that we can start to move on. We're talking, you know, if we're going to rehash everything we talked about last week without a recognition that we made all the changes or we made the additions, we're not going to get anywhere. Pillar busting this, it's, you know, we put a lot of work into it. We put a lot of work into going through the letters, looking at everyone's comments from last week and adding everything. Discuss.
One might have to go with this.
That would be approach to using the time. I'm sorry, someone dropped their camera, I think.
Alan Slaven, you got to mute. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. So, so all of that is, is basically upon, we don't yet have, you know, don't yet have a proposal. So we're asking the planning board to propose bylaw that we have. Planning board, the power as a permit granting. Either approved, denied, conditioned, whatever you're going to do with a special permit. I'm, I'm used to having planning boards that have the confidence in themselves that they can go through the criteria in their language and be able to, you know, properly assess, you know, again, you know, approve, commission, deny, whatever's going to happen. I'm not usually used to, Alan, I, Mr. Slaven, I think you've got a problem with your screen. But what we do is I think we've covered everything here. And if we can go through some of the pieces, I think that that would be, that would be comments, you know, that to what you mentioned, you know, as things of special permit, as if right. I've never experienced that. The special permit is a special permit. You know, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that happening. This is pretty specific procedures that we laid out on all of this, how to go through. Additionally, when we went through, for example, we listened to, you know, the chairperson from Conservation. You know, she had said that she wanted the Conservation Commission to get all station early, et cetera. What we did, we put in a special section at four B three, where we added to the pre-filing requirements. The planning board shall refer copies of the application to the Board of Health, Town Engineer, Conservation Commission, Water Departments, Steward Commissioners, Police Department, Fire Department, EMS, Municipal Maintenance Department and Building Inspector. And building inspector, which shall review either jointly or separately. The application and shall submit their recommendations to the planning board. So again, what we tried to do is we tried to listen to the comments. We tried to enhance what's here in this bylaw responsive to the comments that we received, um, from everyone last week. Um, we also went.
We were missing two board members last week and we're just getting going here, I think. So you should be prepared.
Oh, yeah, that's great. I'm prepared, but just if we can have the questions, I just know that the comments that were there. Were a rehash of last, um, of last week. So I can go through, uh, any other questions. If you want, I can continue to go through what some of the changes were, if that's, uh, with you folks. Um, what we think was, sorry.
No, I think it's very appropriate that, uh, you go through the changes in as much detail as, as you think necessary.
Okay, super. Um, what we did was we, um, we added that the total land area must be contiguous. Um, you'll remember that there were comments about intervening streets and how that was problematic. We eliminated that. Um, what we also did was we came through, um, again, the hydrological groundwater studies. I just read all of that through the details. Um, we clarified the uses by referencing your existing definitions within your bylaws. So for example, um, there were comments on open space, floor area ratio, multiple family dwellings. We went through and we made your bylaw, um, language, the default bylaw language on this. Um, what we also did was we strengthened and clarified the setback language. Um, and to be clear that no buildings may be within the 300 feet of any principal residential, uh, structure. We increased the setback for taller structures, um, from 300 to 400 feet. So there were some questions last week, um, about the height to, in order to get it more internal to the site. And we basically bumped that up to 400 feet. Um, additionally, um, we increased the required open space from 20% to 25%. Um, we picked with the land trust, um, that up. So we think that that was a plus. Um, and then we enhanced the requirements, uh, having to do with your bylaws existing open space definition. And then, um, also, uh. Oh, we removed, George, you remember that there was the, um, the odd reference to masonry in the design review of the exteriors. And, um, we took that out, um, and that's under section 11A2. So we cleaned that up as well. And then overall, what we did was we reacted to some of the, uh, the questions about just the title of the entire, um, bylaw. Um, what we did was we, we kind of tossed them around. Economic opportunity overlay district was one. Um, and then we've heard from Mr. Buckland, uh, who, who said that, you know, he, I think he was defaulting back more towards hospitality, recreation. And entertainment, um, overlay district. So whatever you folks would want to call this, uh, we default to that. But what we tried to do is take notes and go through the questions of any of the issues that were raised. And make those changes and that's in the draft that you have now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, this is Ken Buckland. I wanted to, um, note that the, uh, the changes have been substantial. And, um, uh, we've been working pretty hard on this together with, uh, uh, the, uh, the group. And, um, I, I think what we have is something that's, that's, um. Reasonable to discuss what alternatives we, we need to address in the, in the changes. And have a, a warrant article that the town meeting can, uh, can approach, can vote on. One of the reasons why I, um, mentioned the change in the, uh, or not changing the name. Is because the warrant article, the way it's written right now is a housing, recreation and entertainment bylaw. With a, uh. With a text that, uh, would be developed through the, uh, process that we're dealing with right now. So that in the public hearing process, we, uh, identify the changes that are appropriate. And, uh, include them in the recommendation to, uh, to submit to the, to the town clerk and the planning office. As the document the town meeting will vote on. Uh, and we'll have that ready by the time the, uh, the, uh, January, uh, special town meeting. If it, if it is so set, uh, becomes available to, uh, at the town meeting agenda. And allow them to vote on, uh, the article.
Uh, on a special town meeting, when does the warrant close? Two weeks prior?
It's already closed, Mr. Chairman.
I understood the time and date of the meeting changed.
Correct. Yeah, the, uh, looks like Claire, when did you establish for, for January 14th?
January 16th.
16th.
So you're using the closure date of the original date? Is that what I'm hearing? So this is like a COVID postponement? Is that treated that way?
Correct. It's postponed because of COVID, but the warrant has closed and it's officially been posted.
So.
So does that, Claire, does that just lock in the title? Just to be clear?
It locks in everything as, as the warrant, whatever the language is on the warrant. The minute that that is legally posted, that's what's on the warrant. So any changes would have to probably be amendments if they're substantial.
We're back to the substantial versus non-substantial question.
No, no, um, Mr. Chairman, if you will, I'll pull up the warrant for that. The, the article really just, uh, gives the title to it. I'm having a little problem with my, my other computer here. So I'll try and pull it up on my, my phone if you'll give me a minute.
While you're doing that, Derek, may I say something on a, uh, on a different subject? Or I'm going to go back to, um, some comments again. I'm going to focus heavily tonight on zoning versus project. Uh, Russell, you had commented about gambling. For, uh, for gambling to occur in Wareham, um, Wareham citizens have to vote. Um, one for the zoning change, which is we're talking about now, but also two. For a change on the, uh, host community agreement. And three, um, the state of Massachusetts has to vote to allow, uh, gambling in that area. Under, um, different rules and regulations that we have today, unless another class one casino wants to come in. Point being is that I believe that what we're trying to do tonight is open up to meeconomic opportunities. For a multitude of things to happen and make sure we do that wisely and smartly. And we deal with the specific projects on a case by case basis through the special permit process. And as it comes to gambling through the election process or the, or the referendum process for, um, zoning changes and host community agreements. Um, I, I don't want to get bogged down with zoning changes at a time when we need to, in, to attract as much economic development to this town. As Mr. Sullivan has talked to last week, as Mr. Tashel has reminded us last weekend, again, tonight. Um, I don't want to get bogged down on, on what people do and don't want. I want people to understand that what we're trying to do is create opportunity. And then deal with specific ones at a later point in time.
I agree.
I think what Mr., I think what the notice group has done here is, has really demonstrated their willingness to listen. To what, uh, the citizens of our town have told them and have responded very admirably. Um, and I want people to also understand, I agree with 99.9% of, of every concern I've heard here. And I'm picking very carefully when I want to address them. And some, many of them I do not want to address in a zoning article. I want to address in a special permit. So.
Yeah, but if we've, this is the vote, to vote for it or not for it, or the board's favorite doesn't, you know, what? Are we favorable for it or not? We have to iron some things out here.
Just, just to reiterate, just to reiterate, you did say that. Uh, approval of this zoning change is not going to be construed as community support for gambling.
Right.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll read this and then if you don't mind, um, uh, Member Swenson, I'll, if you have something else. So it says, Article one, hospitality, recreation and entertainment district. To see if the town will vote to amend the Wareham zoning by law to establish a hospitality, recreation and entertainment district. A copy of which is on file in the office of the town clerk or to do or act in any manner relative.
Well, the copy you're referring to is what we looked at last week without the changes, correct?
No, it would be whatever the final copy would be on the, uh, on the, in the clerk's office before town meeting. So that's why you do that. So it gives you an opportunity to make changes to it. That's why, you know, having the, the citizens' hearings and, uh, things such as that.
But I. Uh, you can, if you want, Charlie.
I have a problem with allowing changes to take place on a zoning article. So important is this right up to the last minute. This troubles me because most times these kinds of things are worked out in advance. So that when you get to a point of posting it and putting it in the town clerk's record. People have got a, an idea that they can go to the town clerk and see what is actually going to be voted on. To put it in their hands at the last minute is unfair to the citizens of the town of Wareham. And I think that that practice, which has been kept going in the last few years, it is not a good thing to do. It never used to be that way. Things used to hammer down pretty well in advance. So that when they hit it to the point of being submitted to the, for the selectmen and going to the town clerk's office. Whatever was there was what was going to be done. The only thing that the moderator at that time, and I defer to Claire on this. Was that they would allow changes to a zoning article provided it, as I remember it, was a money issue. And not a substantial change. If we're going to make substantial changes to this, which could happen. To put it in the hands of the town clerk at the very last minute is totally unfair.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could comment on that.
Could you, could you just let him finish, please?
Oh, I, I thought he said it's totally unfair.
Were you done, Charlie?
This is an issue that is dealing with the zoning for a large percentage of the town. And people should have the opportunity to see exactly what is being proposed at any time. And I'm sorry to disagree with Richard, but zoning articles and special permits. Should be dealt with together in terms of exactly what the procedure is going to be. And how that zoning article will actually be promoted. I have issues that, uh, we haven't even talked about tonight about what is in here for the procedure itself. We haven't even talked about that. I have another question concerning the density of housing. Haven't talked about that. So I'm not ready to say, oh yeah, this is all set to go. Put it in the town clerk's hands. Here we go.
I'm not either.
Do you need to touch you?
Yeah, thank you. Um. This is the process. So what happens is once, once we go, it gets referred to the planning board for these public hearings. And it's not one for you folks to approve, et cetera. It's for you folks to hold these hearings. Illicit, you know, what, what we're looking at, public commentary. And to have this document evolve as a result of the public hearings.
No.
Approach you as, doesn't approach you as a done document that you either vote to. Don't vote to approve. This is an iterative process that results from your process. Out it then goes as something that the planning board will vote to either recommend or not recommend. And then that goes forward through the process to go eventually to town meeting. This isn't a situation where there's additional time, et cetera. We are complying with all of the requirements of the mass general laws with respect to the timing. With respect to change, substantial change, I think what's happening is a little bit of a conflation. That is, that's basically a concept that has to do with when zoning articles go to the floor of town meeting. And they change, substantially change on the floor of the town meeting. The question is whether they've changed so much that they no longer relate back to what was actually, um, proposed. Part of the public hearing with the planning board. And the cases say either that's something should go back for the planning board to, um, discuss, you know, basically comment upon or not. In this instance, this is what we do year in and year out with different towns. We go in, we follow the process. The planning board use, you folks use your expertise. And what I'm doing, having a document and then coming back in a week and saying to you, look, we heard you. We made the following changes. That doesn't put our article in jeopardy. It's the opposite. What we're doing is we're working with the planning board to get a document that hopefully. Majority of you folks can say, we're satisfied and we recommend this. Then off it goes to town meeting. Town meeting can approve it, can reject it, et cetera. But the process that we have with you folks, you're not deciding any particular, you know, up, down. It's either a recommendation or it's not a recommendation, but it's supposed to be a process where folks bring these issues up. And we respond. You folks may have, uh, different requirements. Your planner may say, I want to add the following line or something, you know, it's, it's getting away, it's expanding. This is all what we do in towns, you know, 30 something years. This is what we do. There's nothing special about Wareham. You folks are exactly following procedure. And, you know, I, I hope that these changes, your questions are going to be able to get us to, you know, basically to a vote. Because, you know, if it's just filibustered, we don't go anywhere. You know, we're just going to have to keep coming back and, um, it just doesn't seem as though we're, we're getting someplace.
Well, I understand the process you've outlined. You did kind of leave out the do notice to the voters', uh, conflict of it. And, uh, I, I think that would be up to the moderator to, to determine whether this is acceptable procedure. To change something after the warrants close.
But your selectmen can always go back in. You know, they've got a host of other, you know, options that we've also had done in other towns. I don't know, Derek, if you've done it before, um, in Wareham, but this is, these are basically what we're dealing with. Um, COVID pushes us off, which I saw that as a plus. It gives us enough time to actually discuss this, go through it with you folks. Um, I'm not necessarily seeing it as a negative thing, other than, you know, obviously it's.
Well, I, I thought it was going to be to our advantage too, but I, I forgot the closing date didn't change when you moved the meeting. I think.
I hear you, George.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, you know, we're, um, it's interesting concept because depending on how long the, uh, the public hearings will, will, will last. And things such as that, we, we're giving a six week note. Let's say, and I'm not saying it's going to happen today, you, you voted on it and this was the final rendition. That's a, you know, you're looking at a, uh, almost six week notice to the voters, which is longer than some of the timelines of calling a, a special town meeting. Um, additionally, as the, as the person that's been involved for the last decade, serving this community. Um, I know it makes me a neophyte versus, uh, people like you, George, Claire and Charlie, but it's been a little while. Uh, you know, I am the one that's been, that, that works on the finances for the town. And has seen that, uh, right now we've got a municipal maintenance staff that's literally one quarter of what it used to be. A police department that's the same staffing level from the nineties. A school department that's asking for 6.6% increases and we, I'm saying we're lucky if we can give you 2%. Uh, we, we need to grow because we, we know from four or five years ago and override is not going to happen. So we need, I'm being begged to bring services back to the community. Begged to, to give the people something to do from the families. Um, you know, I look at it and zoning is the number one way to make a change and bring in growth. And it's, uh, you know, we're looking for, for positive growth, growth of jobs for our residents and such. So it's, uh, it's one of the toughest thing. We've been, we've been sort of squeezing blood out of the stone for a while. And we, you know, if you see the projections outside of some lucky, lucky strikes, we're, we're about to hit a wall. And our best revenue generators outside of, uh, outside of marijuana, believe it or not, has been solar. And, uh, you know, now we see pushes back on that. So. And, uh, you know, now we see pushes back on that. So I don't know what we want to do to make sure this town is viable going into the future. And we need help.
I'm not finding fault with any of that. I just wouldn't want to see this process thrown out because somebody made a protest of, of do notice.
Understood.
That would delay us if we had to start all over again.
Mr. Chairman, I think one part of this process of the public hearing and going, going over a comments and responses is part of the public process because people understand this and, and, uh, and gain information from the, uh, the iterations that are, that are developed in the, uh, public hearing process leading up to town meeting. So we're not, we're not saying that people have to, uh, understand the bylaw in its whole, um, two weeks before town meeting. They are understanding it as we go through the, the, uh, the review and, and responses that, uh, we're making to the, to the, to the bylaw.
Tell me you didn't just say, hey, we've got to pass it to know what's in it.
No, I did not say that.
But it wouldn't surprise me to hear him say it, so.
I will, uh, take a little break from our discussion here and allow some public comment. Uh, I would like to ask anyone commenting that they try not to be repetitive. As far as, uh, different, uh, entities in town, including the town, uh, we're, we're all aware that, you know, people need money and organizations need money. I don't think we have to go that route. Just try to, uh, keep your comments to the zoning article in front of us. I do have a letter. Uh, if I can find out where I put it. Uh, let's see.
I have it, George. Would you like me to read it?
Nice. I got it. Let's see. Nope, I thought I had it. Where'd it go? Yeah, go ahead, uh.
All right. This is a letter from John Salerno from Glen Cove Hotel and Mark Anthony's Pizzeria in Salerno's Function Hall. This is addressed to George Barrett and Chairman and the rest of the planning board. Dear Mr. Chairman Barrett, members of the board, as owners of the Glen Cove Hotel and Mark Anthony's Pizzeria, my family and I are dedicated to seeing Wareham thrive as a community. However, this has become particularly challenging due to the pandemic. In fact, the town recently experienced a cut of 10% in state aid and there are likely more budget cuts to come. Therefore, I'm writing to urge your favorable consideration of the zoning change proposed for the R-130 district north of Route 1, Route 25. This proposal would simply rezone the district from residential uses and allow other types of development to be considered. As a result, I believe this is a reasonable, this is a reasonable proposal that is in the best interests of our community. Thank you for your attention to this matter, as I said, from Mr. John Salerno.
Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
And I think that's the only new letter that we have. That's all that's been forwarded to me. And I would say anyone that wants to offer some public comment would identify yourselves and we'll try to keep this orderly.
Don Jepson? Uh, Mr. Barrett, uh, you mentioned that there were no new letters, but did you read the letter that I sent?
Uh, I haven't seen it. So if it was sent to me, I, uh, Ken, do you?
Well, let me follow up on a few things from last week. I, I actually, uh, went out to see the area and drove up Glen Charlie Road and out, uh, Maple Springs. And I was trying to identify the area that you were talking about. And, uh, there was one area that was apparently had been a gravel pit, but is now recovering and has trees on it and it's just starting in that phase. Um, but what I was impressed with was the number of houses that were out there and how they will be impacted by this zoning change. And especially on Maple Springs Avenue or Street. Uh, as I was driving out there, there were substantial homes, many of which were brand new. And, uh, if I were in the owner or I had just purchased that property and, and followed through on the zoning that was out there, I would feel very betrayed by what is being suggested here. Um, I must admit that last week I was appalled to find out, uh, that Mr. Tochio could not find out the overlay and that other people had already blessed this project without understanding exactly where it was. So that's a concern. I, I'd like to have some feedback at the, a little later as to what was going on there. Uh, but as far as the letter that I sent forward, one of the things that, Mr. Tochio had mentioned was this was going to be a revenue stream for the town. And he made the mistake of saying how that, how that would open up the town to being able to apply for grants. If you look at the letter that I sent, it basically says that the town has not done a very good job of applying for grants, has not done much in the way of multitasking and going after these grants. And I cited the fact that, uh, on the November 20th, uh, in the Boston Globe, a $68 million was awarded to different towns and again, Wareham came up with nothing. And then I get into the detail and I talk about the different uh, zoning, not zoning, but the different grants that have been available. And, uh, my understanding is that everybody is counting on the revenue to come from this, but from what Mr. Tochio said, a certain amount of that money would be coming from grants. Well, if you don't apply for grants, you don't get money. And if you have a reimbursement grant, yes, you have to put the money upfront, but then you get it back and then it's free. And I listed over $25 million awards going to other countries, other cities and towns. And we never applied but for one, and that was only because the Coalition for Buzzards Bay wanted to do something additional with their, with the bathhouse for the town, which was a great project. So I think by having an ill-defined area with very little specificity as to what's going to be done there is not the way to proceed. And I'll leave it at that.
Great. Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I respond to Mr. Jepson?
Sure.
Okay. So my name came up, uh, three times there and, you know, ill-advised and all these great adjectives. Um, so the information he's talking about, I believe, is a conflation having to do with the Mass Works program. Um, $67 million was granted, but that's only two-thirds of the monies that were available. So what's happened as, uh, is the Economic Housing and Development Office has basically sat on an additional third out there that they haven't awarded yet getting into post-COVID. Um, what he didn't mention was Wareham was an applicant. Wareham was an applicant for, um, the Mass Works Grant in order to fund the installation of some, uh, infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. And that's still an outstanding grant request. Um, I'm, I do know the Buzzards did make requests in the past. That's great. What's happened is within the last, you know, four months, the town of Wareham has gone forward, has done that. So I think that the proof is in the pudding. If it's not really happened, it just happened within the last four months. And they're still in the running for that and all of the money hasn't been, um, outlaid. That's indicative exactly of what we're talking about is that in order to do this in the, the manner that we're proposing, Wareham is going to be on the map with respect to being able to qualify for any of these types of grants. So, you know, the, the statements that it's ill-defined, ill-conceived, et cetera. It's just, it just doesn't, um, it just doesn't pan out. When you say that Wareham doesn't apply for these, maybe in the past you didn't because maybe in the past you just had the residential zoning. This is going to open the door for you folks and already we haven't even passed the zoning. And the town's already gone in, starting to look for economic development monies. I think that's big. Another piece of the equation has to do with Serpent. Speaking with Jeff Walker, the, um, their director, speaking with Mr. Sullivan, um, you know, these are the planning goals for your region that, you know, Wareham's got to be on the map for this stuff. It's planning like this that opens the door up. We got a support letter from Serpent. It specifically referenced the efforts that you folks are making in town. And this in particular is, you know, this is something that's out there. When people talk about this on the state level, they're talking about Wareham going out and instituting a zoning change, which is going to make opportunities open. When the Commonwealth is starting to look for shovel-ready projects, when they're starting to look for economic opportunities to invest in after, uh, COVID goes by, they're going to look for ripe conditions. That's what this is. That's why this is drafted and the mandate that it is. When Mr. Sullivan talks about, you know, he, he talked about where your staffing levels are, where you are now. As going through this, just starting to do some of our preliminary work, you know, we have to find out things about, you know, level of fire service, uh, EMT program, police who, you know, fire. Uh, we have to assess that and we have people go in and give us recommendations as to, you know, what can be done in town. And what we're hearing is that you've got tremendous department.
That's still going on.
Amazing employees, but the, the bottom line is that the dollars that are going to be necessary to fund them going forward, they're getting real tight. There's huge competition. That's, that's the big plus for programs of this nature is that it allows for you folks to get the revenue stream so that everyone who's out there working for the town, supporting you folks are going to be able to be funded. And they're competing against education, et cetera, et cetera. That's, that's the importance of this type of zoning. And we talked about the economics last week. We had Mr. Mahady talked about it. So I hope that you remember, um, what he talked about, that just on land that we've identified, you could have 90 single-family houses and that's going to basically have a loss of $800,000 per year. Not a one-time loss of 800,000, but a perpetual year on, year on, year, $800,000. If there's a reduction in state aid, funding for schools, reimbursements, et cetera, that number is just going to go up. It's, it's not, you know, I just say it's, it's not a big secret. The math is very black and white with respect to single-family residential development versus the type of mixed use that we're talking about here. Um, and I'll, and I'll leave it at that. But basically, Mr. Jepson, the points that he made, you know, that's, that's exactly the track record that you folks are falling into. Mr. Buckland just put together that entire grant application, again, just in this fall. Because it hasn't been awarded yet, doesn't mean it won't. Doesn't mean that he's not setting himself up in you folks for the town of Wareham for that grant application next year.
Mr. Barrett, could I respond to Mr. Tochio?
Uh, keep, uh, keep it brief though.
Mr. Tochio, you still did not mention what is the actual land that's going to be utilized. We have this vagueness about north of 25 to the border of, you know, Plymouth, et cetera. But the other part, I, I'm not finished yet. Um, the other part that you, uh, mentioned uh, is that these grants have not been applied for in the past. And in my letter, I said that Leopard doesn't change its spots. So unless you're going to be, uh, helping to do these grants, there is not a full grant, a full-time grant writer in the town. And so this is a penalty that we paid in the past. So the, the problem that I have is that you have not identified what the area is. You haven't identified what is going to take place there. It's all done in a lot of, um, smokescreen as far as you, you started off trying to talk about a tra, a racetrack, hotels, and you were going to be putting in the Cape Cod Baseball League and everything else. And then when you found that in the legislature that could not happen, you're do, you're throwing a bunch against the wall to see what you can get done there because the town seemed to be receptive and seemed to be interested in this. And as you said, this is the process you go through all the time. This town is not going to go through the same process that you've been through. Otherwise, there will be things that will come up like what happened in the Mashpee, when they said they'd have a performance art center, which actually turned out to be a strip joint. And then you'll also have cranberry jello wrestling in the area that you're talking about.
All right. I think we're, we're wandering a field now.
If I could just touch on.
George, if I may, um, Bernie Page, Chairman of the Finance Committee. I just want to reiterate, uh, what Derek has said. Uh, we're very concerned over our ability to continue our current level of services. And the only way we can change that is to do something within the community that will stimulate increased revenues, tax revenues, obviously. And this seems to be an opportunity. It requires, of course, as you point out, some very serious consideration because it does have a significant impact, financial impact. And that's why Finance Committee is very much concerned about this. But we have to go forward and to stand still, we are not going to be able to continue the level of services that are expected by our taxpayers and our citizens. So I do encourage you to continue, uh, pursuing this. The only concern I have is of course, when it comes before the Finance Committee for Review, that we have an opportunity to review it completely and make a reasonable recommendation to the, uh, town meeting as a whole and give them some opportunities. Now, as far as the previous speaker was concerned, they were getting involved in specifics. This is a zoning change. If, you know, it is a third party that is proposing this, and yes, they do have a self-interest, of course. But overall, I think in the generalities that they have presented, they are to our benefit. And I think we have to seriously consider them from that point of view and not get diverted from what they may want to do in the future. Thank you, George.
Mr. Barrett, I'd like to hear from Mr. Buckland regarding, um, these accusations that we don't apply for grants.
Uh, just one moment. I think, uh, we've got a couple of people waiting and, uh,
I don't want to get off, I, I don't want to lose sight. I, some very strong accusations were made and I know they're false. And I think Mr. Buckland needs to respond to those right now. I'm sorry, George.
If he'd like to, I'll give him the opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, we did receive the comment letter from, uh, Don Jepson. It is on file as well. Uh, one of the things that, that I've done in, um, my tenor tenure in the, um, in the planning office has been to, uh, go after grants aggressively. And we've received grants every year, multiple grants that have, uh, provided the, the town with a substantial amount of money. Uh, we are, uh, also in, in my department are, are, uh, uh, have available uh, somewhere around 800,000 a year that is provided through the, the block grant program as well. Um, we, we, we do go after grants. We are successful and we continue to apply for them. I, I don't think that's a very accurate statement to say that we are, we're, we're not providing the town with the opportunities that are available.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, with that, I'm not sure who was first, but I.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Jared Chadwick. I ask for permission to speak.
Uh, right at the moment, I've got a couple of people ahead of you. Thanks. Um, Ms. Janeski, will you up next?
Yes. Thank you so much for, for, um, letting me have a moment. Uh, I, first off, I just want to thank the planning board for doing their due diligence. Um, I will put it out front. I am not for this project at all. I'm not against a zoning change per se, but I feel like it is so important for, for the planning board to do everything we can to make sure that this is the correct and a, a good change for us. I also feel like unfortunately, I know, and I know disrespect to you, Mr. Tochio, but you do have a lot to, you know, in the game here. but you do have a lot to pu- you know, in the game here. So answering questions, it, I think we need to keep it to the zoning change and not to the project, as people have mentioned. But just as a resident directly off of Glen Charlie, who will be significantly impacted by this, as well as many of my neighbors and, and um, you know, people in this community over here, we're talking twenty-five percent approximately of the land of this town that is impacted in a residential area. So again, I just wanted to put it that out there that I really, you know, can't say enough that we can ask questions. And sometimes, you know what? We might ask them twice. Because I'm not on the Planning Board. I'm not, I, I'm a nurse. So, you know, I get COVID, I get it one hundred percent. But I'm not necessarily going to get all the um legalese that is being, you know, is, is involved in all this. So if I ask a question or if another resident asks a question again, or we need to reiterate or go over something, I think that that is entirely within our rights as residents that we pay taxes. So I, you know, I, I'm thrilled to live in this town. I love this town. You know, we chose to move here because we live on the pond. We have, it's an amazing town. And there's so much out there to offer. So I'm, I'm not saying that, uh, again, being disrespectful to anyone. I just really want everyone to pay attention to what we, we, the residents are saying because we're the ones that are impacted, not the notice group, not Mr. Tocchio. It is us that live, es- especially those of us who live over in this uh East Wareham section of town. So thank you for listening to me, and that's really what I just wanted to say.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Jim Menez, are you still with us?
I, I am here. Um, and thank you, uh, Chairman Barrett. Um, I, I, I have a question, I guess, for the Planning Board to start. Um, how many proposals for un- for one thirty uh residential developments have we had in the last ten years?
How many proposals for R one thirty?
Yeah.
I couldn't answer that.
I have no idea.
No idea.
Baptiste, can you help me out?
No, you're on your own, sir Jim.
Yeah, I, I just haven't seen a lot of them. So to, to say like um that these, these impacts are going to be great and sudden, I think that's a stretch. I understand in the long term, the implications, but to make it seem it's going to be uh right now, um, it's not the truth. Um, I did take a little bit of time on GIS. The area is slightly under nine square miles. Um, about five point five square miles of it's uh zone to aquifer. About three square miles of it's under um National Heritage Endangered Species Program. Uh, I didn't get to uh do the area for the Buzzards Bay, for a Buttermilk Bay watershed area, nor the um area that's all protected under um conservation restrictions. Um, that would be the state in private conservation restrictions. So of all this area, I, I would like to know, and I think the town should take this upon them to figure out, um, how much land is actually developable there? Um, of that nine square miles? Uh, I didn't see very many large parcels, maybe a couple. And I think that's important information to know. I'd like to see some maps with um layering, showing um, you know, some of the things we've discussed here. You know, the zone to aquifer within this, the uh Buzzards Bay watershed within it, uh wetland, agricultural lands, um, and anything else we can think of. You can do them individually and you can layer them to see um what, what areas there are actually developable. Now, there's three roads in that area that would be impacted for access. And that would be um at least from what I could ascertain. That would be Glen Charlie, Maple Springs, and Charge Pond is the access points. Um, so those areas would be impacted on any of the development and, and where the develop, you know, depending on where the developments are. Um, also, all, most of the uh special permit uh allowances are not allowed under um current zoning. So we're basically changing all of those into permitted under special permit. And there's quite a few of them. It's a majority of them. So that's, that's something to be considered. Um, and also, you know, we do have some uh use of the property uh as it currently is um in its current state, as open space in, in natural resources, you know, boating, fishing, camping, hiking. Um, that, that brings some economic uh funds to the town. Maybe not as much as, as could be brought in otherwise, which is a big question mark. Maybe so, maybe not. Um, let's see what else I have here. Oh, what, what, what is the, what does it cost the town now in the current state of the lands? What's the, is, is it a net profit in, in taxes or is it, are we losing money? Is it, is it a, does it cost us money to have that property taxed as it is? Right now, is it, it's not a net, it's not a negative net uh loss of eight hundred thousand dollars at present? That's with a buildout of um all one thirty. And we don't know if that's ever going to happen. A lot can happen between now and twenty years down the road. Um, I, I'd just like to have a little more clarity on what is developable, what isn't developable. And so I can see those areas in particular. A lot of agricultural land out there, a lot of water resources, those areas are not developable. Um, and I think it would give us a better handle on um more information to make a good, sound decision. Uh, this, this isn't um chicken feed we're talking about here. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chadwick, I think you are up next if you still want to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I want to start off uh by adding to um Mr. Sullivan uh what he said earlier about town resources. Um, so I've been a firefighter paramedic uh for twenty years. Uh, in the last six years, um, I used to, uh, before the six years, I used to work for the town of Wareham EMS. Um, I work down Cape now for a twenty-two square mile town. Uh, Wareham's forty-six square miles. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, Wareham has two ambulances with two paramedics or paramedic uh basic in each ambulance. Uh, the town I work for has four ambulances and we do fire and EMS. Uh, Wareham actually does more EMS runs uh in this town than we do combined fire and EMS uh down Cape for the town I work for. Uh, I just wanted to add that as well, uh, Mr. Sullivan. Um, also, uh, since last week, uh, our last meeting there, I decided uh I would write a letter and if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to present it to you guys tonight. Um, good evening and thank you for the chance to speak. As some of you may know from speaking last week, my name is Jared Chadwick of Glen Charlie. I'm the president of the Wareham Tigers and I also sit on the Advisory Committee for the Wareham Boys and Girls Club. On August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, I started a Facebook group against the notice group and the mixed-use project anchored by the thoroughbred horse track that literally planned for my backyard. I heard the rumors about the property and I hit the ground running and I did the research on the possibility of what is being talked about here tonight. Shortly after creating the Facebook page, I was contacted by the notice group and was asked if I would be interested in meeting. We met in my driveway and talked for almost three hours. What we did talk about, you may ask, believe it or not, we only talked for a short time about the project. The rest of the time, I told them how much help this town needs with its youth, its schools, its public safety, and most of all, its future. I've been riding and walking on the property in question since I moved here full-time in two thousand twelve from Nantucket. And I've talked to the owners multiple times and become very good friends with them. The property will be sold sooner or later, and it's in our best interest to make it something positive for the youth of this town, for the future of this town. As you may know, this property is currently zoned for ninety single-family homes. Adding more houses to this town is starving for progress, will do nothing but set up for failure. The notice group is fully aware and is willing to help us in other multiple youth programs in this town because they are a family-run business and they have proven it to us time and time again. People that may know me know that I would remortgage my own house if my wife would let me to pay and supply the youth of this town for a brighter future. I'm sorry if that was me. Uh, I've gone to a lot of businesses in this town to seek help for our youth programs. Unfortunately, the big box stores cannot donate money because they are corporate and the small businesses can only do so much. A big company that is based in Massachusetts is a company that we and other nonprofit youth organizations can back year after year after year for donations. In fact, I know that they will fulfill their promises because they recently donated an exorbitant amount of cleaning supplies to the Boys and Girls Club that didn't have enough stuff during this COVID pandemic. This is an example of both the generosity as a company and extent to which critical needs are not being met in our community. I'm asking you tonight to please favor this zoning change and think of the youth that will be running this town one day. If we not take advantage of this, opportunities like this, when they present themselves, then we are failing to ensure future progress in Wareham. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hurd, I think you're up next.
Hear me?
Didn't hear you then. Are you, is your mic on?
Oh, try again.
There you are.
Oh, you can hear me. Uh, thank you for listening and I appreciate all the comments the people have been making. Uh, after last week's meeting, I did go back and take a look on your webpage and looked at some of the regulations that were proposed. One of them I had a concern about, that was under Section Five Dimensional Requirements. Under B setbacks, there's no buildings and structures associated with large-scale indoor and or outdoor commercial recreation facilities, hotel conference facilities, and associated structured parking facilities shall be allowed within five hundred feet from any, and this is the part that bothers me and I'm concerned about it, from any existing abutting principal residential structure. Which means, as I understand it, that if someone goes in and takes a hundred acres and there's no one adjacent to them, they can basically build on the property line. I was under the understanding that there was going to be a three-hundred-foot buffer zone between any large development and anybody else. Could someone please explain if I'm reading this incorrectly or if this is some sort of an oversight?
Um, anyone care to comment on that?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, I can. What we did was we put it off of the principal residences just because there's so much um, you know, woods and other resources that are there that all have to be independently um dealt with on the, basically the setbacks. So when people talk about um, you know, for example, there's some natural heritage land, um, that has huge setbacks, et cetera. So what we tried to do is we tried to key it off of the primary residence, knowing that those are, you know, basically the big receptor. The bottom line, as we go in on the special permit, is we're looking to work with you folks going forward. If we can just get the zoning in place, it's our intent to come in with different plans. Comments like that would fall into the special permit um review. People would actually look at what's proposed, look at distances and things of that nature, and then be able to, you know, look at it and, you know, assess the special permit based on that. Where we're talking about a hundred acre minimum lot size, it's, it's just so, um, it can be so different from property to property, et cetera, that what we tried to do is we tried to key it off of with the receptor. But again, the special permit is in place. So our intent is to have zoning in place that allows us to work with the town and then to be able to come in to, to present our proposals and then, you know, basically work with the town on those.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to that as well, that uh we're not saying that the rest of the zoning bylaw is uh is negated as a result of putting this bylaw into place. The section on landscape buffers that are required in the zoning bylaw would apply to this project, any project is, that gets proposed here as well. So the rest of our bylaw would, would help mitigate or, or modify any projects that meet the standards that the town has already adopted.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. With a hundred acres, I'm sure you can provide some setbacks. But if you're building against a property that has not yet been developed, this sort of lets you build right up next to the property line. And that I'm concerned about.
Yeah.
I think the idea is good. I think the concept of having development in this area is good and I think it's up to the Planning Board or uh, I guess, and that's another question I had. Is typically, are special permits issued by the Planning Board or the zoning board of appeals?
It depends. Uh, typically, the um special permit is a, is a change of use. It's a special use in a district, and so the Planning Board would be required to a- address it. However, if in terms of technical issues on zoning, that is the purview of the zoning board of appeals. And so they have their own special permits that deal with um uh more of the uh, the, the technical uh, uh requirements of the bylaw that uh could be modified as a result of a project coming forward.
Uh, in the uh Wellhead Protection Bylaw, it puts the uh Board of Appeals as the permitting authority in most instances. And this overlay would put it in the hands of the Planning Board. I think that's probably something we should resolve. Uh, we could probably, we're, you know, we've worked together in the past and done joint meetings, but I think uh two ongoing special permits could be a little cumbersome.
I would think so. I've, as, as a past member of the zoning board of appeal in a different town, I remember doing that and the Planning Board, of course, would provide some input and their, their comment on it. But here we put it in the hands of the Planning Board, not the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, we, we believe, and that's an excellent point, the way that this was first put together, um, it would have been subject to the, that zoning board of appeals under the groundwater protection overlay district. Um, in response to uh Mr. Rowley's uh letter and comments, we added it um to the Planning Board as well. So just trying to, trying to be responsive, trying to give you folks maximum protections that we could. Um, our position, if you read it, would be that the zoning board would also have to um, have to issue a permit um under the groundwater protection um overlay as well. It would be the same, you know, it would basically be the same submission, same data, same testing, et cetera. We would expect that they would overlap significantly. And if they were joint, that would be fine, but our intent was to listen to the comments and say, okay, you know, we're, we're not going to do anything to put uh any of the wells in jeopardy. So, you know, we can put that right in there. Everything um that we're talking about as far as groundwater monitoring, mounding analysis, et cetera, is all within um, you know, what, what we would expect, uh, which any sophisticated developer would be expected to do. So we don't have a problem if it's, if it's, you know, overly protective um in favor of the environment, we don't have a problem.
This is going to hurt my ears. I'm re-reading my uh grant proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
I'll send that to the others for approval.
You can listen to that out loud if you want to.
Do you please, if you're not talking? I was trying to find out where that was coming from. Wow. As far as, uh, last meeting, you talked about a master plan uh concept. And you do talk about phasing. Would you, is that to suggest that a, an applicant to all or part of a hundred acre parcel would submit a master plan for the whole site?
Yes. So um, what we would expect is that there would be a master plan for the whole site that would show all of the um proposed roadways, utilities, things of that nature. And uh, we've got provisions in the proposed bylaw that would allow your board as part of the special permit to make sure that certain infrastructure is installed at the outset. So for example, phase one, even though it's a phase one, So for example, phase one, even though it's a phase one, the board would have within their purview to say, we want the following roads installed, we want the following utilities, et cetera. So, um, what we tried to do in that instance was not have a situation where, um, you know, there's, there's uncertainty going forward as to future phases and the ability to have the infrastructure. That's something that Mr. Buckland, um, met with us and discussed that language. Um, and that's all very pro, um, municipality. So we think that's very responsible.
I don't see anyone else with their hands up. Uh.
Lines up, George.
George?
My phone. Put it up and put it in your phone. Charlie, go ahead.
Uh, I have a couple of questions on the administrative procedures. And just looking back, I think it's in section four. Generally, it calls for, uh, actually three different aspects of, of the procedure. One would be a pre-application conference, and then there would be the submission of a general plan. And then ultimately the planning board gets to see the whole thing. Uh, in looking this over and the way that it's been outlined, it's nowhere near putting together the amount of information in a very preliminary way that the town could take a look at from its personal and best interest for all persons involved. When you look at the requirements under B, it says a pre-application conference with the planning department. That's all it says. Then it says a submission by the applicant and reviewed by the planning board of a master plan. Well, what happens during that conference with the planning department? Right now, the planning department consists of one individual. When you go down to item C, information requirements, it talks about a pre-submission conference. Now you've got a conflict in language. First, it's a pre-application conference, then it's a pre-submission conference. My point is not so much with the language and the conflicts of, of particular words, by the, but by the fact that it is designed in this particular case so that when you get to the pre-application phase, you're looking at a significant amount of material that any applicant who comes, comes in and suggests this pre-application conference is already presupposed to get an approval on. There is nothing in here that requires the town administrative heads such as highway, police, fire, board of health, conservation commission, planning department, anyone else who would have an interest in this, in the management of it, to sit down in that very initial stage of the process. I have tried unsuccessfully, previous planning board members have too, to suggest a design review committee, which would look at the design of projects in addition to some other things that might be, uh, possible to look at ahead of schedule. So far, nothing's happened.
Mr. Chairman, Charlie speaking, I'd just like to pin that so we can get back to that at some point when he's finished. Uh, it is a little tough when we have a mega list to sort of respond and it's several different ones of us that want to respond. I do want to say that we do have a design review. Um, Charlie's been there for when we set it up, but not creating a committee through bylaw is what we haven't done. So, um, I will say that's a little bit, excuse me, uh, disingenuous that we don't do that. So, um, we automatically do that. We have Mr. Requina back. Uh, and that's, it's, it's a little bit of a frustrating statement. It's kind of, excuse me, because I was walking for a little bit. It's kind of, uh, what I'm seeing as instead of getting to the, the meat of this, it's nitpicking it by a thousand cuts. And I'm getting a little frustrated. So, thank you.
Well, I will say on, on that score, we have had tremendous amount of difficulties in the past with these unauthorized, shall I say, uh, that take presentations from developers and give approvals that are beyond their reach. And it's caused us a great deal of hot burn at the planning board where we have to make uh, legal decisions on things that, and follow the town bylaw. And applicants have been led to believe that they could do something else.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if, so if you look at this, I mean, this is, these are procedures that we adhere to in other communities and it has to do with the amount of work, engineering that go into master planning. It's not a fait accompli. It's, it does nothing to undercut the planning, uh, process and special permit process. The other thing is the reality, if you get out to C, it talks specifically about the filing of an environmental notification form because de facto, you know, any, anything we're talking about on the hundred acres, et cetera, is going to require MIPA approval. So you've got that entire level. We've got the entire level of specificity that we're going to have to go through. And this isn't, this isn't someone walking in, talking, sitting down with tech Ken and saying, we've got a blank hundred million dollar proposal here and Ken said it's okay. It's, I mean, this is, this is a, a process that recognizes that it's sophisticated development, massive investment and a party that's going to go into the process for a special permit and produce reports, have follow-up, et cetera. You know, the comments that this is somehow, you know, meant to pre-approve something. It just, it just doesn't work like that out in, in the world where we get approvals, where we apply both with the process for something of this size. If you folks are talking about history with smaller projects, maybe people do that and they become very presumptuous. But this is, you know, this is, this is a complicated process. And this isn't meant to cut anybody out or to, to get, you know, some type of de facto approval. This lays everything out for a process that, you know, I, I'm, I, I just hear Mr. Rowley read things in, in kind of say it in a negative way. This, this is language that we get approved in other towns. These are processes that we engage in in other towns with master planning, et cetera, and, and result in excellent projects. Um, we, we see this as giving you folks a list and a process that allows us to sit down with, with the board, you know, go in, come in with hearings and work with you folks. That's, that's the process here. Whatever your, your history has been in the past, um, this is, this is a different level. Um, and I just, I just respectfully suggest that this is the roadmap to you folks being able to control type of development that's going to be good for your town, that you folks can have a heavy hand in helping to design to permit. It is going to result in something that fits in with your town. That's, that's the intent and that's the hope. Our goal is to work with you folks. Nobody wants to put something in that, that doesn't fit them in, that doesn't recognize what's.
And, uh, you know, I, I understand that and, you know, it's the planning board that always gets blamed for every delay in the world. So the more information that's shared to the most people will make everything go faster.
Yeah. And that's why we added everything in, you know, when you look up at B three, we added an entire section that has each of the departments that we just discussed. I mean, it's, I, I just don't know how much more overt we could be. And, and we want to do that because the last thing somebody wants to do is go all the way down the road on a master plan and then find out that, you know, fires got a problem with a road length or a road width or, um, dead ended area, et cetera. As a matter of fact, we've already had preliminary discussions, just, you know, talking with the town, would, you know, all of your public safety, what are your goals? Um, what do you look to do? What are your limitations? Um, we, we don't even have a bylaw change and we have already had some of those discussions. So I think that's indicative of, this isn't going to be something that, that we, anybody goes in to push. It's too big. Too complicated.
Um, Charlie wished to respond to your comment.
Yeah, I, I do. Um, I don't know how much Mr. Tocchio knows who I am.
Yeah, I, I understand that you're the.
For the last forty years of my life, I've also been involved in planning, working with other towns. So it's not like I'm a neophyte here and I don't know a little bit about what I'm talking about. That having been said, we need to keep in mind that what you're being asked to approve is a zoning change that involves a lot more than whatever proposal Mr. Tocchio has in mind. This is for an entire region of the town. The question's been asked, well, how much land is involved? I would suggest to you that, uh, with the exception of water bodies and perhaps those areas that are under conservation restriction, every acre that's within that zoning district is subject to that change, including those areas that have already been developed. The reason I say that is that in time, those zoning changes may impact those people to the point where they say, okay, I'd like to be involved in this particular project. I'll sell my lot. Maybe a few people would end up doing the same thing. The entire nature of that area of the town could significantly change. The reason why I'm suggesting that it is not being looked at in specific enough attention by the town is that one of the things that you're really looking at is of major concern, including the water, is the fact that you have limited access. Glen Charlie Road is only one access point. Maple Springs has a layout that stops at the well field. George Pond Road is quite a ways to the west. I'm not sure how much of the developable property is there because of the fact that the Wareham Fire District owns a significant portion of land. But it's these kinds of upfront discussions that I think are important to have that I don't know that is being spelled out in specificity in this document. You can talk about the details of it when you get to a specific project. But when you come, come to consider what is important to the town and what are the things the town may have to pay the price for in terms of making these changes, that kind of discussion needs to be had at the initial stage of any application because it impacts so many people. That's all I'm trying to say. I have no problem with the kind of economic development that might be a boon to the town. It would increase its tax base to make it possible to increase the number of employees that municipal maintenance has. I can remember when they had forty or fifty people with three or four different departments. My Steve Minard's issue, he's got a problem. And it's, it's evident. You can see it throughout the town and it's not his fault. But these things are enough to really take a close look at. And that's why I'm being nitpicky, as has been suggested, because it's an important thing and I refuse to give it up.
Yeah. And I could respond to that real quick. And I don't, I don't mean nitpicky in, um, in necessarily having to do with all of these issues. I think the, the point that I'm trying to make is everything that you brought up, it, it goes to the bylaw versus the permitting. If you talk about a particular road, it all falls underneath permitting. It all falls underneath the studies. So again, I don't think that we're saying different things. And I understand you said that, you know, I do know who you are. I understand you're the reviewer for the planning board. Everything that you're bringing up, I would, I would see coming under your review for the planning board of master plan of a proposal. I don't think we really have a disagreement. The points that you are making are all things that if you are the reviewer at the time, will all come before you and you all have input and we'll be sitting down and, and working through everything. The difference, when you said, I don't have a problem with the economics, et cetera, I think that's the difference between bylaw change in the permitting. And that's, that's the distinction that it's, it's, it's clear to me. We have the same goals. We have the same protections. We have, you know, the same process that we're hopefully going to agree upon. And that's, that's just how I, I want to leave this. I respect what Mr. Rowley's saying. I, I understand it all. And, you know, I understand the points that you have. We work with review, you know, engineers all the time to satisfy them. I would expect the same to be, you know, true here. That's all that we want to do. We want to be in a position where the zoning allows us to master plan something, allows us to come in and say, this is how we're going to approach it. Then all of your comments, you'll say, show me X, Y, and Z, and I will have to do so. That's, that's all we're asking for.
Charlie, this is Richard. Can I, can I ask a, can I ask a question, please?
Charlie, just, just let me respond a minute to that. The zoning bylaw is the basis for everything that will take place after that. With specificity, specific about the property in question that Tocchio was representing, I know where it is. The only access to that is Glen Charlie Road. So I would assume that as a part of the process that you're going to look at, if he were to come back with an application to the planning board, is going to be the access from Glen Charlie Road and what will it take to address the issues of traffic and the change in alignment, the change in width, the change in grade, the change in drainage that may take place on Glen Charlie Road? Who's going to buy that? Who's going to pay for it? Those are the kinds of things that I think need to be at least recognized at the very outset.
So, so what if?
I don't hear anybody talking about it.
But because there's no project, so what happens is, I don't want to argue with you, but I can.
Impact that and will cause those things to happen.
One, one person at a time, Mr.
I don't want to argue, but everything, everything that Mr. Rowley is saying, we understand. We've already surveyed the entirety of Glen Charlie Road. We understand that. We understand all of these issues that he's talking about. Who's going to pay for it? I assume that you folks that want a developer to pay for it. That's the process. It's not zoning. It's the special permit process. Charlie, nothing, nothing you're saying shocks me. It's just that this is a zoning bylaw. We're talking about steps four and five down the road and we say, if we don't get through this step, we're never going to have the opportunity to solve your questions, to solve the town's needs. You just, you know, it's just not, it's never going to happen. We'd love to work with you folks. We'd love to answer those questions. We'd love to make a proposal. In order to get something to come in, that's, that's, you know, on a hundred or more acres, a developer's going to have to come in with a robust package, robust plan. That's what we're looking for. That's exactly what we're looking at. And that's what, for the board, that's, you know, all this is, is a recommendation. You're not approving anything. You're not doing anything else. It just gives us the opportunity, hopefully, to go to town meeting, see if the town's interested in this type of economic development. And then if it passes, then we have to come in and, and solve all of these problems. It's, it's not fair. It's not possible to solve all these problems now or the questions now. Um, and that's, that's, you know, again, Charlie, I don't, I don't think you and I really disagree any of the facts other than is this something that should be discussed before the bylaws change? Which is part of the permitting process. I respectfully suggest it's part of the permitting process.
I'd like to. And I do have a particular question. And it has to do with why the hundred acres has to have a recreational aspect to it. But suppose that your project goes through and you put in a recreational facility. I have no idea what you've got in mind. Doesn't matter. It's a recreational use. Anybody else that might have a hundred acres in there that wants to come in has to have another recreational use because of the way the bylaws written. What's the potential for that happening?
Yeah, so.
To anybody else, depending on the kind of recreational use that's required. And it is a requirement. I don't feel that it should be a requirement for that hundred acres. You may want it, but that may not be the necessity of having economic development in the town as a whole. And to require that of the next guy that has a hundred acres, I think is wrong.
Okay, if, if you folks, you know, if it's, you know, you don't want that to be a requirement, that's fine. What we did is we looked at what you've got there as far as, you know, somebody earlier talked about um, for recreation, the value of all of, you know, preserving some pieces of space and, and, you know, the character of Wareham. It, it strikes us that over in this area, um, whether it's the ponds, et cetera, that it lends itself to outdoor recreation. We think that that fits really well. And that's part of what the vision is for valuation, um, for the people that I'm working with. Um, we think that it's, you know, quite clearly, that's, that's one of the strengths of the area. Um, so that's, that's why we proposed it. If, if you folks think it shouldn't be mandatory, that, you know, I'm sure whatever is open for discussion is open for discussion. But that was the read on our side that we thought had value and we've heard. And we've heard a lot of, you know, even the public saying that's something that they like about Wareham. So that was the thinking behind that.
I'd like to go back to the procedure.
I think it stifles the opportunity for other development when you have to link it to some sort of recreation. There are enough other listed businesses potentials in that list that you have that don't necessarily need to have a recreational or amusement area connected to it to make it work. If it's a worthwhile economic thing and it's something that will eventually rejuvenate that entire area, it shouldn't be restricted to that type of a use. Or make it specific that you have to have it in order to develop another area.
All right, I've got a few people waiting. Ken, did you have some? Go ahead, Ken.
Is all right, Richard? If I could, I'd like to go back over the process that had been originally raised by Charlie in this pre-application conference and the submission of the master plan. This is something that we already do. One of the things that I had asked for was a mirroring of the site plan review process that is already in our zoning bylaw. And it pretty much follows the same process. And when I get an application that comes in and it's come into my office, I get the department heads together and the chairman of the board that's going to be reviewing it. And I asked Charlie as well to come in and sit on project reviews. I think that the process works very well because we provide the developers the initial issues associated with their project. So that if it is, say, a project that would require greater groundwater monitoring as a result of the development, then that's noted to the developer. And other than a comprehensive permit that we have limited ability to restrict, all the site plan reviews that we do include architectural review as well in the design of the project buildings as well as the site. So I think our process is already working pretty well in terms of how we go about doing this. And Charlie, I hope you've been great in participating in these early conferences, even though you're not being paid for it. And really appreciate that because of your input to the projects. And I think they've become better as a result of the working together as a whole team towards the project review.
Well, I'm not concerned about the payment aspect of it, Ken. This has to do more with the process and the value of it and the fact that perhaps there should be a little bit more attention paid to that pre-conference portion of it. When I look at what's required, there's an awful lot there that perhaps doesn't need to be done at the pre-application stage as spelled out in your information requirements. It does have a specific date. But to have that initial conference with the various department heads to know what the applicant's thoughts are and a very general concept of what he's proposing gives you the opportunity to really discuss and talk in generalities rather than being, having to focus on a specific plan that he's already prepared and is submitting to you in advance of that in anticipation of getting an approval. I realize that there are two aspects of it.
Charlie?
The pre-application conference is detailed enough to start with. That's all.
Charlie, Charlie, this is important. And I hear what you're saying and I agree with it. But I'm reading this article and I look under administrative procedures, the latest revision with the ads they just made under part three. It says there's a, part one says a pre-application conference with the planning department. Part two says a submission by the applicant and review by the planning board of a master plan. And then the part three, and this was added between last week and this week, the planning board should refer copies of the application to the Board of Health, Town Engineer, Conservation Commission, Water Department Sewer Commissioners, Police Department, Fire Department, EMS, Municipal Maintenance, and Building Inspector, which I think is exactly what you talked about last week that you wanted and is exactly what's been put into the article.
My concern with the way it's written is that all of these other departments get on it too late. And it should be a part of the pre-application conference with the planning department, not simply refer copies of the application to these various town boards.
This is, part three is before the pre-submission conference. Parts D is, or part two is, under D is the application itself. This is long before the application is submitted.
I understand that. But there's nothing official before the planning board at that point.
The master plan has already been submitted to the planning board right before that. Do you have the latest version in front of you? Everything you spelled out, I see right here in this document.
I don't want to take up any more of the board's time. I've taken a lot of time as it is. I think there are specific details of this could be cleaned up some and made a little bit better. But this is the kind of thing that does take the kind of discussion where you can sit around a table and talk about it, not at a public hearing.
We do have some people waiting. Mr. Solomon, I don't know if you were first, but you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Damon Solomon from Fort Greenwood Avenue, Wareham, Massachusetts. And I just, I had a couple of questions. And I spoke last meeting. I already proved, I had some words in that. And I just had some questions. And I'm a little confused as to what the scrutiny, on the level of scrutiny that's being going on with the zoning change. Because my understanding it is that this is basically only for the zoning change. The specifics in terms of what the town's going to get, the infrastructure, all the stuff, it's essentially going to be coming later. So with that, I was under the impression that all those specifics would be part of like the host agreement for whatever developer comes in. And this meeting and the vote, excuse me, is basically, again, just for the zoning change. Now, is this that case, Mr. Chairman? Are we here tonight just for that purpose? And to discuss those, the zoning change itself? Or are we beyond that? And we're talking the specifics in terms of the infrastructure, the questions people have in terms of projects? All those things that could be any other planner or any other developer coming in could have those answers, could have all those spelled out. But it's just not that time for that. So I'm just a little confused as to what, why I'm in this meeting today. Because I thought we're talking about the zoning change and that is it. And I'm hearing a lot of comments about, you know, horse track and Glen Charlie. And I get all that. However, the zoning change in and of itself is what's questioned here today. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, there is some technical details that probably the planning board and the planning department would be looking for. But yes, this is basically, we're trying to construct what you're going to vote on at town meeting, which would create a new zoning overlay district.
Okay, if I may continue, I just had a couple more comments. So with that being said, we're scrutinizing the zoning change in terms of what we need or the planning board would like to see in terms of specifics, which can't technically be hashed out yet until we move on past this process. Am I, is that correct?
Some of the technicalities in this document can be, need to be in this document, and some of them go beyond that.
Okay, that was my understanding as well. All right, so now, as a resident and as a supporter of the zoning change, I just, I stated in the meeting before in terms of what, you know, we all know what our needs are in the town. We all have that spelled out. But I just, I feel, just listening to the meetings, that there is an unfair bias based on former experiences from other developers and other instances where the planning board, like you had said, had may be under severe scrutiny for some, I don't know, did he still that? So I can't really speak to it. But I feel like just the scrutiny of just this process seems to be a little bit, or a lot for that matter, skewed on the wrong side of the spectrum here because of a bias that's predisposed. So I'm trying to understand again why it's taking so much because some, like regardless of the notice group or any other developer has to go in, that property is key. We all know for the town, it's a huge property. But it isn't the only key, however, like Mr. Russell was saying earlier. We have other avenues, but this is an avenue that's got the most traction right now. It has the most interest. It has the biggest bang for the buck in the short-term period. So I'm just hoping that as a resident, that this scrutiny, and to some degree, I do appreciate. Now, I do appreciate making sure every block is turned. However, I feel that there is an implied bias based on the premise that this only thing that is happening is based on the notice group misconception of people, of the public, thinking that it's a smokescreen attempt to try to circumvent the process. And I just don't see it that way. I see it as them trying to present it, the process, the accurate way, giving the residents exactly what they need, when they need it, and they are willing to work in that aspect when we have these questions, but we're just not there yet. So, and that's what I see as a resident as well. So I'm just a little confused. It's a little frustrating, like Mr. Solomon was saying, because it seems as if it's a stall point, but we've got to make some progress here, one way or another. Because if it's not, it's a key point here in our town to capitalize on that land. And, you know, we established before that we need it. So I wish we could just get some traction here, everybody. That's all I'm asking for as a resident.
Thank you.
Well, as the previous speaker said, a lot of these details should have been done around the table and been ironed out before this was even presented to public hearing. Unfortunately, we didn't have that opportunity. So if we've muddied the waters a little, I apologize. But we're trying to deal with Zoom meetings and everybody trying to get input and get their things addressed.
Yeah, I understand all that. And, you know, like a lot of the comments, Mr. Chairman, have been geared towards nothing specific to the zoning board. That's what, and I feel, I want to say we're wasting time, but we're spending a lot of time where that energy should be spelled later in the process. And that's what I understand right now. And I wish we could spend more energy on spelling all these specific things that have to be done right now in terms of making this progress opposed to things that might happen.
I do have a couple of hands up, so, Mr. Solomon.
Good evening. It's extremely frustrating to listen to a meeting where we all seem to constantly go off subject of what's actually in front of us. A lot of this happens at later dates as we go along with a basic, you know, bylaw change, whether it's a zoning or whatever it is. I can remember, and I'm not going to go too far off point, Bay Point and Walmart, we had meetings with the zoning board and the planning board together, back and forth. We've had meetings with 815 Main Street, bringing in all the different departments, et cetera. We've done this for a while. The issue really here is the person that's bringing this forward is not the Board of Selectmen or the town administrator or the planning board, which is normally what it should be. We have a developer who has an interest in trying to do something. If the notice group wasn't sitting here talking about it, ninety percent of what we're talking about wouldn't even exist right now. We just have to have someone who has a potential project for the town that has a pretty large upside as well as a downside, because that's the way things are. Not everything's a hundred percent. You try and do what we call a win-win situation. That's what we're kind of looking at here. But we have to go back to what are we doing? We're putting in a zoning change for an area with potential for five or six, maybe as many, ten different businesses. How many subsidy businesses will be directed there, something that gets put there? That's what you have to look at. So again, like I say, if Mr. Toto wasn't here talking about it and it was the select board or the planning board or Mr. Buckland, we wouldn't be dealing with all this. So I'll leave it at that. Just as a quick point, when the ZBA lost four of their members due to, I think, three died and one just got so scared he left. They had one member left. I asked Mr. Riley to come in and help the new planning board, excuse me, to help the ZBA members go through things. So as far as my faith in Charlie, as far as the laws and the history and stuff, it's really important. Historical knowledge is extremely, what I call institutional knowledge is critical these days. We seem to lose it all the time. But at the same time, I think we go too far over and too far back depending on what everybody's preconceptions are. So again, my concern is that we're basically working on something because the developer himself is bringing forth a zoning change, which makes it look as if it's strictly, you know, for their advantage and nothing else. It won't work that way. It has so many, you know, pieces you have to go through to get things done. The idea of a casino, horse track, all that, those are extremely hard things to get done. The piece right now is, do we want to go ahead and change the area there to provide different opportunities for different businesses or not? You know, do we want to find different, you know, streams of revenue down the line? Or on the long term, do you want to sit there and have to cut back services? And that's where we're kind of at here. And I'm just disappointed the way it's been going because we're spending a lot of time on details that normally are worked out after the facts per each project that comes before us. My time in the planning board, that's what we did constantly. Mike, I hope you're feeling okay. You were coughing a lot.
Thanks.
Okay, you take care of yourself. So that's really my comments here, you know. I remember, and I'll get off after this, I did a TRD and a signed bylaw. I brought everybody of importance in from each different committee. And we sat down, hashed these things out. So the town does do this. Same thing with the grants that we're talking about. I think I'd bring him to Ken. I'd drive him crazy. I'd probably bring him anywhere from one to six grant applications every week of things he can do. So the town is working hard. We don't always get the grants we apply for. We had two Mass Works grants go in. We didn't make it this time. It's just the way it is in life. So if everybody would kind of focus in on what we're doing, try and do one piece at a time, and as each developer comes forward, if this gets changed, then you'll sit down and go through each one of them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. Also, once, I'm sorry, I was kind of disappointed in my letter that I submitted never got written. Actually, read into the record.
I'll see if I can find it in my email.
I sent it to your old email. That's the problem, George.
Unless Ken has it.
Yeah, that's the email you don't look at anymore.
I have it if you want me to read it in, George.
Yeah, just one minute. I wanted to, this person's been waiting a while. Ms. Kenny, are you still with us? I'm not.
I am. I'm here.
Oh, okay. Sorry for the wait.
Oh, that's okay. No problem. So I don't really have any questions. It's a comment. I know that we're only talking about zoning. My issue with the project is purely selfish. I live off of Glen Charlie Road. I purchased my home on Spectacle Pond two years ago. The main reason why I purchased my home in the area, although I had already lived in Swiss Beach for thirteen years, was the quiet. It was the fact that it was a one-hundred percent, except for 7-Eleven, residential area. I did not purchase my home so that I could live on an extremely busy road leading to commercial developments. I think that changing the zoning on what represents, if I'm understanding it correctly, a quarter of the town's total land with one fell swoop, and I understand it's an overlay district. We're not changing the underlying zoning. I think that it needed more thought, more time, more discussion. Again, I understand we're not talking about a particular project, but one of the main problems I have is that we're not talking about a particular project. We have a developer's attorney sitting here. We all know that there was a project prior to this. We don't know whether that project will come to fruition. That could or may never happen. And to reiterate, as several people have said, we can make believe that access is not an issue and just talk about the zoning. and just talk about the zoning. But the bottom line is access will be an issue. It would involve either a lot of work to Glen Charlie or an interchange, which would also be a huge issue for anybody located by that interchange. And to ask me to vote blindly to change the zoning is not something that I could ever do or that I would ever support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any hands raised or
Mr. Chairman, Ron Bessie.
Yep.
I just wanted to, first of all, thank you and the members of the board for the opportunity to speak tonight. As I said, my name is Ron Bessie. I'd like to talk a little bit about my support for the zoning change. Not necessarily for any particular project that might come of it, but for the change itself. Because without changing the zoning, you know, there's really no point in talking about projects because why would a developer want to waste time and money on something that would never happen? Wareham is an amazing town in so many ways. You know, for example, you know, it's a beautiful beachfront community. We have more than fifty miles of coastline, which is why the population doubles every summer. In addition, Wareham has also been known as the gateway to the Cape. But unfortunately, Wareham isn't really no longer the destination it once used to be. And one of the big reasons for that was when the highway was put in many years ago, people didn't have to stop here anymore because they could just go right over the bridge. As a result of that, I really think that, you know, we need economic development for a host of reasons, you know, for schools, for fire, EMS, you know, the police departments. Zoning change would allow us to consider, you know, not approve, but allow us to consider revenue generating projects. I really don't think that we need more houses in town. You know, I think it's going to be a strain on the town from a financial perspective, you know, from, you know, water supplies, things like that. Our local businesses, the schools, and property owners, I believe, would all benefit from these types of proposals. You know, therefore, I would urge us to allow the change to be considered for the special town meeting, to allow us as a town to look at potential opportunities for economic growth. But without this change, I mean, I think it's, you know, it's a moot point, and I can appreciate, you know, the notice group coming forward and really taking the time to really look at all of these different issues and scenarios that might come up and dedicating the resources to doing that. And I would just say that, you know, we need to at least give the credence and the respect that is due to at least consider this at a meeting and allow the voters who have the voice in this town to make the decision. So, you know, I just want to thank everybody for the time to allow me to speak tonight. And I really hope as a town, we can come to a decision that is going to benefit us for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bessie. And Mr. Chairman, if I could, that's exactly, if we look at, I think it was Mr. Is it John Salerno earlier when he submitted his letter of support? Highly respected businessman in town. Look at what he's doing. He's recognizing the benefits. We talk about the coastline. We talk about, you know, cross, you know, cross purpose, you know, purposes where you can actually have people come in and then encourage folks to get out to onset. It's opens up more than just the opportunity just for that piece of land. We haven't even talked about the spin-off economic effects, et cetera. But that's exactly what Mr. Bessie's touching on. We just want the opportunity to have the zoning in place so that we can make these proposals so that you folks can actually consider this. We just want to work with Wareham. We think it's a great town and all of the needs. I think everyone's in agreement with the needs. We are looking at providing, you know, revenues and the opportunities, the jobs, frankly. That's just what it comes down to.
And if I may, I'm not presuming to speak for the whole board, but we're not going to decide the fate of this. Town meeting will. What we are looking for as a board, or at least what I am looking for, is a document that works for us. That's easy to understand, easy to work through with the applicant that protects both the town, the people, and gives us a good project in the end. That's what the planning board is looking for. So if the question's got a little nitpicky or tedious, it's that's why. We're looking for a document that we can understand and work through and come out with a good project. But it all depends on whether it's passed a town meeting. We don't make that decision. The voters do.
We respect that.
Yes.
George, this is Nancy McHale. I have a couple of questions. And thank you for your indulgence. I wanted to circle back to Mr. Hurd's question about setbacks. If I'm reading this correctly, it says that no building shall be allowed within three hundred feet of any existing abutting principal residential structure. Does that mean that the summer residences would be allowed to build closer than three hundred feet?
This is how close their project could get to an existing residential structure, which I would assume would be a primary residence and not a shed or a garage or
Well, what, considering the fact that Wareham's population doubles in the summertime, the word principal in there would be problematic for people who bought their summer homes and then all of a sudden find within fifty feet of their property line some others enormous.
I think that would be the principal residence on the lot. That would be what would key that.
Right, because it's summer. It would still be a principal residence.
Okay, so it's, can we take out the word principal and just say residence?
Yeah, I think the distinction under zoning has to do with, George mentioned, like, things like, you know, sheds and et cetera, like accessory residential, you know, their accessory
Some sort of outbuilding wouldn't trigger that. It would have to be a house.
Right, so different types of buildings. So what it does, it distinguishes where the people would live. It would be impacted.
Okay. Thanks for that.
There's an example. Oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
No, I was just thanking you for the explanation because I didn't want the summer residents to come back and find that they had been, you know, left out of this zoning bylaw. I also had a question about how this zoning, rezoning, is different from what the B-Dod zoning had been, and if the business development is still possible within that old B-Dod area. I mean, I know that we're all looking for business development, but is it really necessary to rezone a quarter of Wareham if there's still viable options elsewhere?
I'll ask someone like Ken discuss that. We've heard a lot about the B-Dod, but I don't know how it's been applied. This is just an overlay for an area, but so it wouldn't conflict with that. But if Ken's still on, I'd want you to get the best answer that you could, and it probably doesn't come from me.
George, is that right? Go ahead, Ken.
The B-Dod was set up with a goal of economic development in the western part of the town. It looked over, it was placed over a lot of cranberry bogs and cranberry-related developed property. It never came out to its full potential that it was originally discussed or proposed, even though there have been some great successes out of it, such as Rosebrook Place and some of the development of industrial type uses in the district. But it's also been used for solar farms as well. And it hasn't, it never came out to fully develop in the goals that were set for the district. We have an opportunity here with another open area of land that is probably, the developmental portion is probably larger and has greater potential than most of the B-Dod did because of the way it was broken up with water resources and cranberry bogs in between the parcels. The intent is somewhat the same. Only what we want to do with this district, if it works out in accordance with the title, is that it has uses that are attractive to the residents of town as well as visitors who come in and spend their money in the community. The intent of both of the districts, the B-Dod and this new concept, is approximately the same, get a better use out of the land and get the kind of jobs and taxes and value for quality of life that we're looking for from the properties. We've learned a little bit from the B-Dod, and hopefully we make this a better opportunity here on the in the new district.
This is Richard. The one key difference that we didn't touch on there, and Ken's absolutely right, the goals are very similar. But in this overlay that we're talking about here, it's a hundred acre minimum. So it's, there's open space requirements here. It's not industrialized, commercial, manufacturing type of development. It's much more of what the original title calls out of hospitality, entertainment, recreation type thing. So it is a hundred acre minimum where the B-Dod certainly doesn't have a requirement like that. I'm sorry, Ken. I didn't mean
Is there an overlap on the two overlays, Ken?
Excuse me, say that again, George.
Is there an overlap here? Does this overlap?
No, it does not.
Because I thought it went up. And as far as the title goes, I think this is the hospitality, recreation, and entertainment I think fits more what people have been led to expect. Are we working, what timelines are we working on as far as conducting the hearing, rendering a decision? We using the standard special permit ones? Are there different ones proposed for this?
Following state regulations and the state law under chapter forty-eight.
So it'd be similar to what, a definitive?
It'd be similar to a special permit that's issued sixty-five days to a public hearing. Hundred and thirty-five, I believe, to a decision.
Okay, thanks.
George, I still had a couple of questions. And part of it relates to having the notice group and Mr. Totino, and I'm sure I spelled Toshio, I'm sure I pronounced that incorrectly, do most of the presenting. I know that Ken and Alan have worked extensively with Serpent. Has Serpent weighed in on this? And if so, do they have any opinion about how this is written, what the language is? And if they've written anything about it, could that be posted on the website as well? And I haven't heard anything or seen any letters or discussion from either the water departments, either of the water departments, the Wareham Water Department or onset. And I didn't know anything about how the sewer moratorium would be affected by this.
I did talk to Wareham Water, and they were comfortable with the existing watershed protection language. I don't know who's speaking.
Sorry, and this is Jeff, basically answering Nancy. The moratorium, we recognize, and we know that that's going to have to be solved. So we see, we would see ourselves in whomever else is out there as part of the solution that you folks have. I mean, we're aware of the one point five six million gallon per day limitations, et cetera. We're also aware of the financial limitations that sewer department has. And we, you know, we see ourselves as part of the solutions that you folks are looking at. So we've had some discussions, and that's something that's out there. With respect to water, we understand that water capacity is good. That was all part of the original due diligence that we did. And again, different departments are looking for, you know, the applicant to participate in, you know, various needs systematically for what you have in town.
George, I can answer for Serpent if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay, for those people who don't know, I'm actually the chairman of the Serpent Commission for the twenty-seven communities in Southeast Mass. The request was sent out, and the executive director, Jeff Walker, responded. It was really based on the economic viability and the impact for the region. It's not just Wareham, but the other towns around us. And they basically responded in a positive way. They really don't get into a lot of some of the other things, but as far as infrastructure and road and things like that, Serpent would be extremely involved in any road projects, especially with the Route twenty-five interchange. And just for those who don't remember, I think it was, and Mike probably remembers better than I do, I think it was at least ten or fifteen years ago that there was an idea of a project right off of that same area. And the state actually approved the Route twenty-five interchange way back then. It was never implemented because the project failed and never came forward as well. But again, as of right now, Serpent is quite much in favor of, not the actual, whether it's a horse tracker or this, but the idea of the economic development, the area there. Thank you.
Thanks.
George, I have a question on density.
Sure.
Looking at the density issues in, with respect specifically to multifamily dwellings, the way that it's written out. I think Mr. Totino said correctly last time that if you had a hundred acre parcel, that up to ten percent of the total end area, meaning ten acres, could be used, and that the underlying zoning of three acres per house lot would limit it to three specific dwellings. However, this particular language says that the number of multiple family dwellings shall not exceed the number of dwellings allowed. Multiple family dwellings does not mean single family. So in the next section where it talks about the height restrictions and so forth, if you have an allowance of an eighty-foot height on that one multiple family dwelling, which would be allowed, you could have eight floors and as many families as you could fit in there. So it's not simply restricted to three house lots. That's the way I read this particular language. With respect to the sewer and the moratorium and so forth, if it turns out that the process is such that you could not connect to the sewer system that the town has, it would mean some sort of an onsite system, which would be subject to a groundwater protection permit from DEP. When you look at their regulations, I think you'd find that the limitations on discharge is much greater than what you might want to have if you're sitting directly over the top of a well or a watershed that you're using for your water supply. And that's why I put in my letter that I'd like to see the limitation be three parts per million total nitrogen and an assessment of phosphorus. I noticed that both of those requirements were not put in the revision that was made.
Yeah, that was a good question on the density. And I went through this last Monday. Remember when I said we'd wind up with nine to twelve? What happens is you've got the hundred acres, ten percent, basically ten acres. As of right would be the three dwellings. What we do is we put in that, they could be multifamily dwellings, which are defined under the bylaws as three to four, you know, basically three to four unit. which you defined under the bylaw as three to four, you know, basically three to four unit. So what we did was we, you know, we got the three dwellings and then we multiplied it by the three to four, we wound up with nine to 12. So that would be that would be the limitation per 100 acres.
So I don't see any hands raised or comments.
Hey, George. Could I could I ask for some clarification on that last point about the density?
Sure.
So if you're going to do 10 per 100 acres, which you could do on on three acre zoning, what would what would that be, 30 acres?
Sorry?
If you're going to do 10 on three on three acre zoning, that would be 30 acres, correct?
No, what happens is it winds up being reductive. So it's 10% of what would be allowed. So what happens is they're basically at the 100 acres then would, you know, for mathematical purposes, be reduced to 10 acres. 10 acres would support three single family under the the 130, 130 square feet is three acres.
Correct, I just, yeah.
So what happens is if they're going to be the multifamily, under your definition, you've got like multifamilies could be three to four individual dwellings in each. So what I do, Jim, is I get three.
I don't care.
And then I do it three times either three or three times four. So the math is nine to 12 units per 100 acres. So what happens is winds up being reductive and, you know, kind of funnels down to to that number.
So that's a point, and you have a, what is it, 0.25 lot, lot area?
So what happens is.
Are you reducing that? So you you're increasing your density over a smaller area or no?
So no, so that doesn't apply to the residential. It's it's basically, it was, give me one second.
But that would only be in relation to a special permit development where you can do the multiple residential, correct?
Correct. In under 6A, Jim, it's got the maximum allowed floor area ratio ratio for non-residential uses shall be the 0.25. So what we did was, and Ken was, Ken worked with us to exclude the residential, you know, and basically clean that up. So that's, you know, the two are separated from the others. And yes, it's just for a developer who is going to elect to exercise, you know, this overlay provision. And again, what happens is having that type of use gets us into a different level of potential qualification for state aid monies, things of that nature, et cetera. And that that basically had to do with the Gatra bus line that goes down Glen Charlie Road. Just because if you're approximate, if you've got, you know, some residential component proximate to those transportation lines, that's that's one of the new things that the state is looking at as, you know, being a like a trigger for aid. So what we wanted to do is make sure that we've already got the Gatra line. So we wanted to make sure that you guys got the biggest, you know, potential bang for your buck.
So I guess what I'm getting to add is that that would take 30 acres of space for 10 places. So you can put those four units, say, on four acres? Two acres? I mean, you know, you're going to put 10 units. How much how much land would you need? Would the other 25 acres be remain open space then? Because under the normal zoning, you could only build on, put 10 houses on there and each house would be what? What's a footprint of an average house on those on those properties there, you know?
Yeah.
You know.
I understand, I understand where you're going. But what happens in this instance, there's not like a prescriptive amount of land that would take this up. So what happened is the developer would say, this is what we're going to have for the footprint. This is how it's going to aggregate itself. And this is the land area that, you know, this is the corner of the property, for example, that it would go into. And then the planning board under the special permit would have the opportunity to look at that. And then the police, fire, everyone else can say, you know, we want this changed, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I can't, I just, that's all, you know, it's like a density increase. It even, the purpose changes, but you, you know. And and that aside, and an earlier point that two speakers brought up related to setback from existing residential structures. I think anything where the property isn't owned by the proponent, they should have to have that setback in place. So any butter who might want to do something else is not impacted on future development concerns or things that they would like to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
George, just clarification on that multiple family stuff?
Sure.
I'm looking at section 621 of the bylaw in the R130 district. It only allows single family dwellings. So how do you get multiple family dwellings on any of it?
It also, it also says that in the watershed protection bylaw.
So my question is, how can you get more than three dwellings and three single family homes on that 10 acres?
Through zoning bylaw change is an overlay.
Through this zoning bylaw change?
Exactly.
Then you have to define what a multiple family dwelling is.
You already have it in your bylaw. You already, you already have it defined.
Could you point me to where that is?
I only have mine here. Scott, would you be there on the back?
B-11, multiple family dwellings, is that what you're looking for?
Say again, George?
Section 4B, item number 11 is multiple family dwellings, but that's all it says.
No, he'd be looking at, he's looking at your, which article under your existing bylaw that's contained in?
I'm looking for the definition of a multiple family dwelling in the existing bylaw.
I think you need to get the most recent version of your bylaw.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One of the things we're doing and we wanted to do at this town meeting was to improve the definition of a multifamily dwelling. They're they're defined under section 340.4 residential uses. But one of the things they don't do is talk about the the shared, the shared walls, which is one of the things we are doing with the proposed change. That's one of the articles for the town meeting whenever it may happen.
Yeah, so we've got three to four family dwelling, a dwelling containing at least three, but not more than four separate dwelling units. Or it could be, I mean, basically, so that's the three to four family dwelling. Then above that, we just wind up, you know, being more apartment configuration.
Are there any more comments, George?
George?
Is that, you wishing to speak?
Yes, Bernie Pidgen.
Yep.
What is the date on the document you're looking at or you're using?
It was, it was put up on 12/5. Or it was just, it was distributed to the planning board.
11/18.
That's an old one.
Yeah, that's the website. What I wanted to say is.
Bernie, it is, it is on the website. It's listed at a high level on the planning board website on the left under HRE, revised zoning article or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The reference is often made to the 100 acres. The language, though, in that the second paragraph is contiguous or non-contiguous. Now, we cover a large portion of the residential area with the R130. And.
I think that was, I think that was adjusted in the latest version, wasn't it, Jeff?
Yes.
You mean that the non-contiguous?
The non-contiguous was taken out.
What section are you looking at? It's, is it showing as section two?
Yes.
That, okay, that was taken out. That's now, there's a new section three, so if you go online, we took that.
I could envision a little old lady living on the infield of the racetrack.
There were a little, there were, there were some comments about that at the last meeting, so we.
Thank you.
Are there any more comments, George?
You did put some reference to the stretch code in here?
Yes.
Is that necessary, since it's a building code that's already in place, that we have to reference that or?
Not necessarily, but what we wanted to do is we just wanted to put it out there, recognize it, you know.
Do you have the Kool-Aid?
There were additional comments last time that, you know, our position was it's covered elsewhere. We just wanted to be very clear. We wanted, you know, show, show you folks that we're recognizing what's going on and we're just looking, you know, we just love to have this pass and be able to work with you folks to make all this happen. The bottom line, it's funny on the stretch code, we're going to wind up with an ENF, which the requirements for that are going to, you know, that's quite a process, quite a long process as well. So the reality on anything under acres or more is that you're going to fall into that basket. So it's just more protections for Wareham.
Regards to your setbacks. Personally, I wouldn't be opposed to be able to be more flexible with that at a site plan level. Because hide and fast doesn't always work with those.
And that's why we did it off of the principal residence. And we agree what the reality is, the the land's so big and it does have different resources out on the outer edges. That, that, you know, the bottom line is, you know, things are going to be aggregated more towards the middle of the, you know, the property in any event, because you're going to want to avoid all of those. You know, you may have different mitigation requirements. That's the way that it was looking at for us. So what we did was we, we tried to get a reasonable number, which got us far away, you know, kind of what we deem to be comfort level from, you know, from those principal residences. And I think as we have these pre, you know, meetings, et cetera, those would be appropriate questions. What, why are you here? Have you considered sliding over in this direction, et cetera? And that's, that's, we do envision some flexibility because of the primary residence and also just because of the, you know, it's pretty ample size.
Are there any more public comments?
I just want to get back to how you envision the interaction between the ZBA and the planning board regarding the watershed and the requirements of each.
Yeah, I, right, our position is we envision that we would have to get both. And that the board may as a matter of course, I don't know if you are used to having combined meetings. We do them in other towns often where there's a subject of overlap. Where the two boards will open, they'll have the hearings. You know, we anticipate as of right now that groundwater protection overlay district to ZBA. And then this, this will be for the planning board, but with those similar performance standards and requirements added. So again, belt and suspenders, we think that, you know, probably you folks would be best administratively how to handle it. We are prepared to go to both.
George, a comment on that if I may?
Yeah.
I would not like to see the planning board remake, which is overall control over the project. Even if the zoning board has some jurisdiction over the groundwater protection district, that they become a reporting factor to the planning board. So that you can take their information into consideration, that you become the decision maker. Not that it be split between the zoning board and the planning board. Because in that way, either board will not have the full understanding of the implications or the process that goes on when public hearings are in session and so forth. This is important enough that if it's the planning board's jurisdiction, the entire thing should fall back to you with recommendations from the ZBA. If that's, if that's what you want to do to keep the zoning board online, so to speak.
I would, I would, I concur very much with Charlie out, put one twist on it, though. I don't see the, any issue with having the ZBA responsible for the watershed permit and the planning, as long as the planning board's responsible for the entertainment district permit.
Well, I would take exception with it, Richard.
Of course you would. Charlie and I have great discussions and we, and don't get, don't get us wrong. Because we learned, he teaches me all kinds of stuff and, and, but we do have a lot of good debates.
Not trying to get you lost. I just want to keep the focus on who's going to be responsible.
Understood.
Let something as important as the water get dropped from the procedure and you get an approval from the ZBA and then come running back to the planning board and say, well, they've already approved it. We don't have to be worried about it anymore. If the planning board is the special permit granting authority, let them be the authority for everything.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't we be anyway?
No.
I mean, the way.
We're to be the approving authority for the water portion.
But if we weren't, all right, all right, I understand your point. I can go either way. I don't, I do not want to put the water, and I like the idea very much of having the ZBA in in primary on the water, reporting into the planning board for the overall permit. I like that idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good solution. Make a recommendation to the, to the planning board for permit.
If that works, that works for us. It's going to be all the same testing studies output. We're going to be doing it all, any event.
Yeah, any other changes you'd like to see?
George, is this going to be continued? Are you going to call it tonight? What's your, what's your plan?
I haven't pulled the board yet, but I think time is.
I think we should close, we should close the public hearing first, George.
Well, we're having a discussion right now.
Yeah, so don't we, don't we have to do that outside of the public hearing?
If we do, we can't seek information, so.
So what, one thing I'd like to bring up, then, I don't want to miss the opportunity. A previous speaker last, last meeting brought up affordable housing and inclusionary. I would like that to be considered in the, in any of the housing development in there. We as a town need to address that issue moving forward. And it's got to start somewhere. And as we're developing new zoning, that's a perfect place for that to start. And the same is with the Wareham village zoning, that needs to be considered in there also. Otherwise, we're never going to be able to address or to even try to keep power with it, never mind catching up. So that would be, to me, a very important piece to include in this. Thank you.
Just speaking for myself, I, I'm not supportive of that.
That's okay. We're all titled of opinions. Thank you.
That's okay. We're all titled of opinions. Thank you.
George, I have, this is Nancy again. I have one, actually a couple of comments. One is that if too many of your, um, there are too many meetings to go to, to sort of keep track for the public, to keep track of these, the approvals that need to go on and to keep up with everything. So the more hands that are trying to have meetings about the process and get things approved, if it's Z B A, planning board, et cetera. Um, it's going to be more difficult for the public to get their arms around this whole thing. So from a consumer perspective, a citizen perspective, it would be helpful, in my opinion, to have maybe the Z B A weigh in on it, but for the planning board to be the one that has all of the final approval and that's where all of the documents reside. Um, it just, it gets overwhelming sometimes when you're trying to figure out this was, um, you know, this meeting was supposed to happen, but it didn't because they asked for a continuance, blah, 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 blah. And it can go on and on forever and it just gets really aggravating for the, for the, um, citizen. The other question, and I'm just going to go out there on a limb and be the one to say that this project just seems overwhelming or the, the rewrite, the zoning overlay district is so huge. All I can see, having lived in Waymouth, all I can see is this being Braintree. I just, I moved to Wareham. I don't want Wareham to look like Braintree. I'm sorry. I'm, that's, that's the, the bus I'm on. Okay. So is there any way to have the zoning overlay district be pared down so that it's not a quarter of a town, so that it's a smaller land mass that we can wrap our heads around, get two to three big projects in here and not have them be five to 10 projects, as Alan alluded to, that totally change the, the makeup of Wareham. Just asking if it's possible to dial this back a bit at this point.
I don't know. Perhaps you could shed some light on how it grew to that size. I, I know you have to, uh, at the appearance of not spot zoning, but, uh, it did expand quite a bit bigger than I expected. So.
It did.
Did you have some other interests involved or?
Sorry, George, is that a question for me?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. So it's the one hundred acres. We had two hundred acres originally.
I, I don't think we're talking about the size of the parcel. We're talking about the overall size of the, uh, overlay.
Oh, um, yeah, just, just trying to, um, not violate, you know, spot zoning, et cetera. The thinking was that, um, we could identify it, you know, in an easily identifiable area so that the southern um, borders, you know, Route twenty-five, and then it was pretty easy to basically identify, you know, just the R thirty zone, um, one thirty zone up there. Um, on some level, if you folks say, you know, it should be cut in a certain spot, um, you know, that would, that would be at your discretion. The one hundred acre minimum really limits a lot of what's happening here. Um, so that's, that's a little of the protections. Um, because you've got the, you know, the small parcel, um, neighborhoods, et cetera, that just aren't going to ever lend themselves to being able to, you know, be a hundred acres. Um, it could be two hundred acres if you wanted. What we tried to do is we just tried to, um, work with, um, you know, work with your planning staff and they come up with something that was, um, more typical kind of size, if you will, as opposed to, um, doing something that, you know, kind of a little rarer. Um, so that's, that was the genesis there. So if, if this was changed to two hundred acres, you know, I think that would really, um, you know, put those issues to rest. But then again, you know, it's, it's something that's up to you folks.
Any more comments from anyone?
Yeah, Don Jepson. At the end of the letter that I sent in, uh, which is online, my recommendation was the same as Nancy's. Uh, this has been proposed as a, the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. And if we dial it back, which is the expression that Nancy's saying, then we will see how much of a pot of the gold will really materialize. But first we need to know how big the area is and define what it is. Thank you.
Uh.
George, I think we, I, I think we need to wrap up this public hearing. We're beating it to death.
Uh, just looking, Ken, do you have, uh, Alan's letter to be read in if it's not too long?
Sure, I can, uh, pull it up and, um, do I have it read in?
And it is very long, by the way. You know Alan.
No, not Alan.
It'd be another hour in a public hearing here.
Yeah.
My letter is not that long.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not. Speed run.
Ken, I got it in front of me if you want me to go.
Yeah, why don't you do that? Because I'm a little slow.
All right. So this is a letter from November, dated November twenty-fourth to the Wareham Planning Board, to Chairman Barrett and members. I've been asked for my thoughts on the proposed hospitality, recreation and entertainment district and why I believe it makes good sense to approve and support the proposed zoning amendment. I am drafting this letter at a time that represents huge challenges for our town and challenges for everyone working to get through this period. Can't remember a more important need and opportunity for us to pull together as a community and look out for each other and the best interests of our town. The reality is that the Commonwealth is currently debating tax increases, program cuts and reductions in needs in aid to cities and towns that are likely to impact every Wareham resident. Called out as a separate line is twenty-five percent of Wareham's revenue is from state aid. Next paragraph is that in the coming months and years, we will be looking at highly competitive environment for jobs and new economic development as communities struggle to deal with a growing tax burden. There will be new opportunities for smart development and Wareham will be in the running to attract this tax generating and job creating growth. Competition for these revenues will be tough. Please mute yourself if you're not talking. Competition for these revenues will. Hello? Competition for these revenues will be tough as every city and town in the Commonwealth is suffering from consequences of the economic slowdown. I expect that with the changes in, in President's party stimulus package for infrastructure similar to what the Obama administration brought forward early in his first year. It is critical to have potential projects shovel ready to take advantage of full government subsidies. We have a real chance to take advantage of some of these opportunities if we are prepared and put procedures in place now. The proposed hospitality, recreation and entertainment district provides a procedure where economic development pro- proposals that meet certain thresholds may submit, submit a proposal before review by the ware, by the planning board under Wareham's existing special permit review standards. Review by the planning board would follow the usual public hearing process with peer review and public comments. The proposed zoning amendment applies only to our one thirty land north of Route twenty-five. We would never prevent a residential developer from using land for permitted purses, purposes, but we have a unique opportunity to improve our zoning to allow for uses that will attract smart development. While the Commonwealth is considering various economic development programs and initiatives, we do not currently know what will be available in our region. We do know, however, that we have a unique opportunity to compete for any project that becomes available if we do the work now to update our zoning bylaws. We are all aware of various town projects that were expected to be on the horizon, whether development of onset here, a post-public safety complex, or our police department and emergency medical services. Discussions regarding the need for a new community center, senior center and more. It is important that we take upon ourselves to find ways to address budget issues without increasing the burden on Wareham families. This proposal puts us in a perfect position to benefit from these competitive economic development opportunities instead of watching them locate to other communities. Thank you for considering my opinion. I encourage the planning board to support the proposed hospitality, recreation and entertainment district zoning amendment sincerely, sincerely Alan H. Slav- Slaven. And I'm just going to note for everybody, he's a board of selectmen member. That's it.
So what I have is the addition of um, the verbiage on watershed, say Z B A will recommend to the board a re- report on their adherence to the watershed bylaw. Does that sound reasonable?
It does.
Was there anything else we were looking for in the document other than the changes that have already been made?
George, I'm still not clear on that multifamily aspect of it as to where it defines multifamily in the existing bylaw. Because the current zoning for our one thirty says single family use only. And that's what it's referred to in the bylaw changes. What's underneath?
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, I think we can, um, add to that where it's got in six A multiple family dwellings. I think we just add something along the lines of which shall be defined as three or four attached units.
So we have two changes that have been made, uh, so far tonight. One was regarding the Z B A and their recommendation regarding the watershed overlay district and this one that Jeff just outlined regarding the, um, multifamily housing definition.
Yep.
I don't know, Ben. Are there any other?
If I, if I could, um, on, in regards to the multifamily, uh, one of the things that we worked on was the true definition and the three to four, the three to four units per building i- is fine, but I, I'm not comfortable with the verbiage of attached. We've already been down that road here in town before. Uh, the language that we changed was that they have a common demising wall so that we don't end up with buildings connected by expansive bree- breezeways or such. So i- if we're going to have that language in there about multifamily, I think it has to refer back to that common demising wall, which I believe is, is in the warrant for town meeting to, to be updated, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
And Mike, we'll defer, we'll defer to what you folks want. We, it doesn't matter to us. Um, I was just trying to, um, lock it down so that you folks would know it would be the three to four units, that the unit number wouldn't, um, rise beyond what the calculations.
Okay.
Then I apologize. So, Richard, um, don't forget we were going to restore, um, the name of the, um.
Right.
Anything else?
George, I make a motion to close the public hearing and, um, and then move forward with a plan for, um, I just make a move, I make a motion to close the public hearing right now.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Just a procedural question, George, before you vote.
Uh, yeah. But.
You're voting to close the public hearing. That means you can't take any further input. Uh, you're going to be able to look at the revised language and decide that whatever is written based on the comments made tonight are acceptable. Under what purview would you be able to adjust that? If you're closing the hearing now.
Claire, I think we're that down to the substantial versus non-substantial, a very subjective, uh, definition. Is that, do I understand it correctly? Claire, did you hear me? I don't think she's.
I didn't. Do you want to?
Yeah, um, Charlie was asking the question, if we close the public hearing, that means we don't take any more public input. And under what conditions could we make any changes to the document moving forward? And I think that is where, um, the substantial versus non-substantial subjective determination comes into play. I'm asking for your opinion on that.
I'm not an attorney, so I can't answer that, Richard. Um, the only question I do have, the document that you're working on tonight, has that been filed with the town clerk? Prior to this hearing tonight?
I, I do not know the answer to that. Mr. Buckland, would you know the answer to that?
I, I was trying to recall when Sonia had filed it with the town clerk. I don't know when it was actually submitted to. We, we received this, um.
Ten per second.
Yeah, this, I'm sorry, it's, it's, uh, Jeff again. Um, so it's, it's allowed by law to be able to, um, if it's discussed in public, um, you folks can subsequently, uh, make the changes. If, we've already accepted, um, the draft into, um, you know, it's the record. And then you folks have actually, um, talked about what you'd consider for the potential changes, um, with respect to the town, uh, clerk. Later, things would go finally, but as we go through the, um, you know, the, the sausage making with the public hearing with the board, um, you know, there are cases that say that this process is allowed to go forward and, you know, you're to come up with your recommendation, not recommendation for, um, the language.
I think it's important to point out that this, uh, article is not, um, proposed by the planning board. You're making recommendations on, I'm making it a better bylaw for the town meeting to vote on.
I would be, personally, just would be opposed to any changes that come up after the public hearing is closed. If, if you want to adjust the language to reflect what you talked about tonight, personally, I have a problem with that. But if you make changes outside the, uh, uh, public hearing process, you have restricted what people can know in terms of what is being proposed.
We, we.
Same thing as any, making any changes to a specific special permit outside of the public hearing. I don't think it's appropriate or proper.
We agree with Charlie. So it would be, be those three pieces to be, uh, to the draft.
Let's, let's talk to those again. Restore the name, the multifamily definition. What was the third? I forgot already.
Uh, the water, um, the, the.
Yep, water and the Z B A. Thanks. So. Again, um, Charlie's points are well taken. We closed the public hearing. We don't receive any more input. The document stands that it is with the three changes that we've decided to make here tonight. I'll make a move, I'll make the motion again to close the public hearing.
I think you're, uh, that came under discussion, so I don't think you need to, uh, you can repeat it, but there's no re.
Okay.
Uh, if there is no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I see, Richard.
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
No.
Hey.
Aye.
Russ, you, he, you lit up, so I would say it's a four one zero, correct?
Thank you.
And with that, I think, uh, we could say good night.
Um, before we do that, Mike, shouldn't, can't the planning board, uh, vote on their support vote tonight?
So it's just a recommendation, that's.
Uh, uh, that's what I meant by support, Jeff. Is there any reason we should keep this out any further, George?
Uh, well, personally, I wanted to look at how a couple of things interacted a little more closely, but, uh, if the board wishes to vote, we can do that. And if I have any issues to bring up, I can do it as an amendment.
So I would. So I would make the motion that the planning board tonight make their recommendation vote that will be read at town meeting regarding the hospitality, recreation and entertainment district. Article that has been presented tonight and amended with three changes.
Were you looking for an action to be attached to that?
No, should I be? I, I'm not sure what you mean by that action attached to that.
Were you making a recommendation to town meeting? Or are you asking if we wanted to make a recommendation to something?
I'm, I'm making a motion that this board vote tonight, member by member, on whether we support or not support this, this article. I don't think anyone's minds are going to change between now and town meeting. We've got five and a half weeks until town meeting. We're already under pressure to get it posted so people can read it. Any day we, we delay it, it's, it's going to cause more pressure on the other side. No one's, I, I'm convinced no one's vote's going to change.
What's the board's pleasure?
We have a meeting next week at six?
Motion is you're asking if we're going to vote on this tonight?
Yes, I am.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Do we have a meeting next week at six?
Yes, we do.
Monday? Okay. That's it.
Keep in mind, Russell, the main reason I think we need to do it now is, is, is the pressure that people at these public hearings have put on us to get this finalized and up so people can review it.
Yeah, no, it's just a recommendation.
That's all it is.
It's just a recommendation. It's not. But it holds weight. It does hold weight.
Absolutely, it does.
I wish it was less square mileage.
But that's, that's what you get to vote at town meeting for.
Okay, the motion for is whether to make a recommendation on this bylaw tonight. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 4-1-0 on that score. The motion carries. Any further motions this evening?
Take the motion. We have the vote.
And what would you propose that motion be?
That motion would be, I vote that the Wareham Planning Board, member by member, vote up or down on whether they support the hospitality, recreation and entertainment zoning article with the changes that we have decided to put in regarding the, the restoring the name, the multifamily definition, and the, and the water overlay district ZBA recommendation to the planning board.
So you're recommending favorable action at town meeting?
I'm sorry, George, I'm, I'm not, I'm not keeping up with you here. I'm, I, I, I am going to vote yes. And I'm asking for a roll call vote of the planning board on how every member feels, me being one of them, where I get to vote yes.
So basically, in town meeting, Lego, you're voting for favorable, you're moving for favorable action, correct?
No, no, no. I am, I am asking that you have in your pocket the results of a, of a five-member vote tonight, that you can stand up at the zone, at, at the town meeting and say the planning board voted three to two to support this article, or whatever number it comes out to. I would like to have that vote right now. I don't know how much more clear I.
And I don't know, did I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Speak, speak now or forever hold your peace.
George, I have a question.
Sure.
What is wrong with waiting until you get the final draft? You have two changes to make that you haven't seen.
Charlie, Charlie, I think you're out of order. Charlie, I think you're out of order.
Sorry, I'll retract my question.
George, did I hear you say that we did have a meeting Monday?
Yes.
George, the motions been made and seconded and voted to have the vote. I think it's time for you to call for a roll call on, on how each member feels on support of this article, for you to report at town meeting.
With that, I will, if I don't have any other further discussion, I will do that. Richard?
Okay. I vote aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Who's, who's next? Russell?
Nay.
Uh, Mike King?
Nay.
What, what's that leave us? I will, I will vote in the affirmative just for.
Three to two, George.
Discussion sake. Oh, I guess discussion is over. We'll talk about it town meeting night. Gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Do we have a report tonight on the Clemmie property special permit application status?
No.
I sent out, I sent out a picture. Did everyone get it?
Yep.
The trailers are still on the property.
Property's still the same.
What, what, what is the status, Ken, of our enforcement officer? Has he been out there as a letter been issued? Or?
The enforcement officer is aware of the, the issue. The Clemmies are coming in to talk to the planning board and present their case next Monday.
Okay. So no, there, there's been no, no action by the enforcement officer, no letter of demand requesting removal of the trailers?
Not that I've seen.
Not that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is there a reason? I mean, we discussed this a couple of meetings ago. I mean, it's been a solid month, six weeks, maybe longer since we last discussed this. Is there a particular reason why the enforcement officer is, is elected not to address it? I mean, this, this one particular site seems to be a, a phone in everyone's side, and yet it doesn't seem like anybody is interested in, in addressing this. And we've already decided that we're not going to request that degrade and cede the property because of the time of the year. But, I mean, it doesn't seem to me like it's an enormous request of just remove the three boat trailers.
I agree, but it hasn't been done.
So is, is it something where we should start requesting the enforcement officer to, to submit a report on these, these actions so that we at least know where we stand? Or are we just spinning our wheels with this?
I think that'd be a reasonable request.
So maybe we could have that for next month?
Ask him to come into next week's meeting as well.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be, I for one would be interested to know why, after so much time, that it's just been, for the lack of a better way of putting it, ignored.
Well, partly because the Clemmies said they were going to be moving the trailers and have not done it.
But had we followed up the request with a letter, then that puts us in a position where if we need to enforce fines, we've done our due diligence.
A letter has been submitted to them from my office.
Okay. So at what point in time do we start in issuing fines and stop accepting excuses? I, I don't mean to sound rude, that that's not my intent, but it just seems like this particular piece of property is getting a pass for the lack of a better way of putting it.
To go back to nature.
Well, I mean, I kinda, I kinda took it to heart at the last meeting when the, when the abutters to the property pretty much called us out on the carpet for not doing our job. And if the enforcement officer is the last line of offense, of defense in this particular matter, then, you know, maybe it's time to call him out on the carpet and ask him why he's not doing his job.
I think he is doing his job. He's got a lot of enforcement orders that, around the town that he's dealing with. Some things a lot more critical in terms of health and safety of, of people that, that he's addressing. And so he, he gets around to doing the, the enforcement that's, that's needed. What we have to do is put a little heat on the fire and ask for action on, on this site to take precedence.
And is that something we can do Monday night?
Yes, it is.
So we have, we have the ability as a board to, to issue a demand and, and a fine if not.
You do not have the right to issue a fine.
So who does that?
The, the building enforcement.
Yeah, we, we've already, we've already determined that that's ineffective. Or he's ineffective, however you want to phrase it. Either way, it's, it's fine with me. If, if I have to sit in front of Mr. Deekus or the other gentleman one more time and, and be chastised for being a toothless tiger, I probably won't be quite as, as cordial as I am now. If I had, personally, if I had an employee who, who acted in the manner that the enforcement officer is acting in this particular case, he probably wouldn't be an employee of mine anymore.
Let's see what happens Monday night. We're going to have, let's, let's, let's insist the enforcement officer come by, just put it first on the agenda, so he doesn't have to stay all night, let Mr. Clemmie know. We can hear both sides and the planning board can make their, make their desires known.
This will not be a public hearing and it'll be conducted as a interview with a violator.
George, can I make a comment on this very quickly?
Sure.
Just so everybody understands, Mr. Queen, just recently came back to work, taking over the job. If you're going back six weeks, he was not an employee at that time. He's only really on the job about three, maybe four total. In that period of time, over half that time, he was out because of COVID issues in the department, et cetera. So he's not been there at all. He's only been on the job really in the last three or four days at any timeframe. And he does have a bunch of cases that he's working on right now. I'm sure when you see him on Monday, he'll be very happy to do whatever is necessary. But again, he has the right to do the fines. The, the planning board does not, so please don't go off the ranch too far. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Intertaining motion to adjourn, Judge?
What's that?
Intertaining motion to adjourn.
I don't know. This has been pretty.
Let's just shoot for 10 o'clock.
Been a while since we've been in a meeting this late.
I want to keep going.
Seeing as I haven't heard a second, I think you do.
I'll second, I'll second that motion, George.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank, thank you all that participated. It's always helpful to give public input on these things. And it's, I know it's been strenuous, but we got through it. Good night.
Night.
Night.